Dons and specialty. Oh my goodness, those cracklins.
Whitney and her family, they've always. Oh, I'm gonna forget it now. It's a place called Rabidows. There's a place called Rabidows that's anytime they go, they have family in Baton Rouge. That's where Patty's from. Anytime they go there, they stop at Rabidows. I really like it. Have you all tried that new restaurant? I mean Honorrais in Angleton?
I've been meaning to go. I've been went to the man vault location.
Is that how you call it?
Honorrais?
Call it?
Wow. You can correct me.
No, no, I didn't know.
I don't know. It's, it's good food. Good food, yeah.
This new Julius Dillon's over here. They have Boudin Colachis.
Mm-hmm. The spices.
I'm the sole reason for the bumping Delta. From Julius.
You and me both.
And my husband, he goes out of his way this way and then that way to Dow from our house. He does a big loop to get there. I have so many points. Like we have a contest of how many rewards points we each have winning.
I actually like their bacon, egg, and cheese sandwich.
I get the bacon, egg, and cheese croissant.
Have you tried their Philly cheese steak?
No. Oh, if I get a colachis, they're chapel. I'll try that.
Whitney gets some chapel.
I always forget to stop because I'm going about eighty-five when I go by there. By the time I see it, it's.
It's more recon?
I think just part.
Oh, man, seventy-four, sixty-four point eight miles per hour. She's looking at me. I got that recorded. Morning, sir. Good evening, sir. Good evening, yeah.
Evening, morning.
It's all tied together, right? It's all on the same clock. How are you, sir?
He gave us fifteen minutes for twenty. These two. Fifteen and a half, right?
Five between the last.
We'll see.
I have, I have face on y'all.
All right, Melissa's log in.
She's online. She's, she's connected.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our June regular scheduled council meeting. Uh, we will start with our invocation. Please rise.
Dear Father, please be with us tonight as we meet to conduct the business of the city. In this time between Memorial Day and the Fourth of July and today being Flag Day, we thank you for the many blessings you have bestowed upon us as citizens of this wonderful country. We pray for our leaders at all levels of government, from our council and mayor, our county officials, state governor and legislature, and our president, Congress, and Supreme Court, that you grant them wisdom and guidance in all that they do. We ask this in the name of your son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
All right.
You forgot, it's also the birthday of the United States Army.
All right, so happy birthday to all our United States Army veterans. Thank you, sir. All right. Role of council members. We have everyone present. Councilwoman Strong is virtual tonight. So everyone is present. All right. Public comments. Is there anyone for general public comments that didn't get on the list? For the, oh yes, for the board of adjustment. All right. Moving along. All right, consent agenda, approval of minutes for meeting on May tenth, twenty twenty-one. Any discussion?
Make a motion to approve consent agenda?
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of consent agenda. Uh, position one, how do you vote?
Aye.
Position two?
Aye.
Position four?
Aye.
Position five?
Yes.
All right. All in favor? Consent agenda approved.
Do you need a cashier vote?
No, apparently not.
Interesting.
Yeah. All right. Moving on, discussion and action items. Action A, public hearing and action to consider an application for an amended conditional use permit of property located at forty-four hundred Brazosport Boulevard North, the corner of State Highway two eighty-eight B and FM two thousand and four, to allow for diesel fueling stations. All right, remember our guest come up and?
Yeah, I'm here.
Hey, Dan, sir, please come up and present.
Yeah, so first of all, thank you for this opportunity once, you know, again. Uh, you guys see right now over operation, uh, we keep it very good, neat and clean. And what we thought about, uh, we don't allow the eighteen wheeler. As you know, we want to actually go with the, you know, the city and whatever public requirement. We want to respect that part. So we only add the, you know, the two MPDs fueling station. Uh, in diesel side, basically two MPDs me. Uh, they would, you can, you will see the three MPDs because the foreign side, they are actually is just a, uh, paras, it's just satellite. They are not the actually actual, you know, the, uh, MPDs. So two MPDs for fueling, but only for the mud trucks and other one, and no more eighteen wheeler. So I'm okay with that part if city allowed and, uh, uh, you can see over operation point of view, we are providing although, you know, the, uh, you know, the job opportunity to crunch people. We keeping our operation very neat and clean and organized. We try to bring as much, you know, uh, improvement as possible. And even then, if any more observation, we are, we are, we welcome, you know, all kind of, you know, uh, uh, whatever your suggestions and everything, you know.
All right, thanks, sir. Thank you. All right, council, any discussion?
I, okay. No, no, no.
I was just gonna ask whether or not you've considered what the heavy traffic through your parking lot would do, uh, to the normal traffic that's going through there?
No, it's not, it's not going to affect, uh, you know, uh, if you look our site right now, first of all, it's a very big site. And we do have a entrance from the other side, two zero zero four, and we will have the truck. They come from the two zero zero four and they just going out from the other side. It's not, don't, don't, we not have any kind of interaction with the other side. Because this is not over, this is a small project for us. Uh, we do have a lot of big truck stop and we still have our own truck stop and we are under construction I ten, twenty, even I thirty in Austin. So we know that how we can keep it separate, uh, for, you know, the, uh, just like, you know, if you go on a highway, right? We always consider the traveler's side and the trucker's side. For here, it's a very easy one for us because first of all, we will not allow the eighteen wheeler. So it means not, not a very, very big heavy traffic is coming on that side. The main purpose, you know, frankly speaking, it is not for us. Uh, because, uh, thank to God, we are doing a great business and it is all because of you guys because you give us opportunity. Actually, it is a more important for the city development also because I see a lot of mud trucks, people, they calling me. They said if you bring the, because diesel nozzle is a different pressure and other diesel is a different pressure. They keep on calling me, if you have a, please, when we come here for a, you know, dropping kind of a construction point of view, we have a hard time to get the diesel. So because, uh, just like a buckies, they are not in this business. Uh, either they are here or they are on a highway. Buckies is a completely on a different kind of a business. So they said they don't have any quality, you know, place where they just go and get the diesel properly. So as far as the heavy traffic point of view, we will have a completely different route. Uh, it's a in and out on a different side. It's not going to hurt anyone. It's not even, don't have interaction with each other.
So you're gonna have another entrance and another exit, is that?
No, if you, uh, if you, this is my site, right? And you know, uh, we do have a main entrance from this side. So we will have that mud truck, they come from there behind the building because the canopy which we are going to build, this is the front canopy, this is the building. On this side, right, if facing this way, on the right hand side, we're gonna to put the small canopy and it's just no more parking, nothing else. They just come, they, they just park under the canopy, get the diesel and they go out. So, so there is no, there is no wait time and nothing else. So it's a completely different route for everyone.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir, thank you.
I just had a couple of questions as well, sir. Um, just for clarification on record, you're saying two high flow pumps?
Yes, actually, it's going to, we have one MPDs, second MPDs. So when the truck, they spark in between. So, so the, this side of the MPD and this side of the MPD, they, they, they have a, they are, they call satellite. So truck or mud truck, they have a tank on this side, they have a tank this side. It's basically two fueling station only. So, but you will see the three MPDs, the three pumps, one, two, and three. But actually, it's a two, basically practically.
So how many nozzles does each station have?
Basically, one MPDs, you know, has a one nozzle, right? And on the satellite is just a nozzle. So one MPD is one nozzle, one MPD has a one nozzle in this side, this side, and the one MPD is one nozzle. So one, two, three, four. So basically, two fueling station and, uh, three MPDs, that's it.
Okay, so four nozzles.
Yeah.
Okay. What's your current mix of like, how, how would this impact you and ultimately the city from a financial revenue standpoint? What's your current mix of fuel versus diesel?
Exactly, okay. That's a very good question. I, I like it, you know. Basically, if you see right now, this side is not the volume side for, uh, gas side, you know. Basically, the volume side, it is where you are touching two hundred thousand gallon and something like that. But as far as my proportion for my fuel versus diesel, uh, uh, is I can say it's a forty to, forty to sixty right now. Because if you see right now, I do have a, a fuelman card and I'm not making any money on the fuelman card. You know why I put the fuelman card, starts at, setting the fuelman card here? If, you know, we have, uh, there is a buses here which actually drop the, you know, the senior citizen from one place to other place. So when we open this location, so they come over here, they said we, we only, the, their government department only allow the fuelman card. And this facility is a very close in, in, in between our route. So if you please add the fuelman card, that really help us a lot. So in fuelman card, actually, they give you only fix five cent per gallon. And rest of the money, they, they take it away. So, uh, I, I, I thought about it is good for the city. It's okay if I make a less money, I don't mind. So I started the fuelman card. So diesel, which I, I'm thinking right now, actually diesel is actually more important than gasoline here. So, uh, if we have those kind of, you know, the MPDs, actually that really help us a lot in the, for construction point of view, development point of view for the city. And once we have these kind of stuff, you know, of, if you, any kind of observation, if city has, whatever their requirement, we're gonna fulfill. Because we are not in such a business that we say something, we are very professional first of all, you know. I, I hire my people very good. I give them all kind of a benefits. I keep it, you know, everything very neat and clean and organized. If you see right now, if you go into my facility, uh, just like if you go to any other gas stations, you will see the, if the family, they're coming into the gas station, they see a so, so much different kind of, you know, the medicine, stuff like that. I have a very neat and clean and I'm, we're having a, you know, more labor, even evening time, more to, to people in my store so that I can give the better service to the community.
Okay. So by adding four high flow nozzles, you increase your, your flow of diesel out. Are you, would that be, are you using your existing tanks or are we having to add new tanks now?
Oh, no, no, for diesel, actually.
For diesel, correct.
Yeah, the thing is, front, we have a shell. Shell is a branded gasoline.
Right, but I'm saying your underground storage tanks.
Exactly, yeah.
Are you using the same ones that are in there?
We have to put one small tank.
So you're gonna have to put another underground storage tank?
Two different, uh, we cannot use the same tank for this one. It's going to be separate.
Okay, so separate underground storage, got it.
Second thing, we will have, you know, the, uh, you know, the complete, you know, the SOPs at operational level that there, we are not going to accept any eighteen wheeler at all. But so, so basically, when you put a big sign on the entrance and the exit and that, just like a buckies, you know, even on a, a highways, they do have a one, actually, they have a very small sign. Uh, it's a no eighteen wheeler is allowed. But we're going to have actually a kind of a big sign which is very prominent and it's not like a small hidden sign. We can put a kind of a big sign and we can say no eighteen wheeler is allowed, only the, you know, the other, other trucks there are allowed, just like flatbed or, you know, the mud trucks, they are allowed over there. That's it. And plus operation point of view, we're gonna to keep an eye also.
Okay. And no, uh, no impact? I know there's gonna be a new truck stop opened on five twenty-three in two thousand and four that's gonna cater specifically for eighteen wheelers, high diesel, high output. Is that factoring into any impact to your business?
No, no.
Because that's where most of the trucks are coming from, five twenty-three.
No, it's not going to affect us any.
No?
Yeah. Because we, uh, frankly speaking, you know, uh, we, we are in this kind of a truck stop and travel, travel center business, you know. Uh, so, but here, we just thinking about, uh, because this is extra investment on us also. Uh, so we, we just thinking about if this happened, that actually help us a lot here, you know. Because if you notice right now, uh, there's a lot of mud trucks, they're coming, lot of mud trucks. All the time, they just, you know, go here and there, here, there, and they keep on, you know, uh, calling, you know, uh, I actually, for some reason, my own cell phone number, it is on Google. Even customer, they call me. Some people, they keep on calling me about, we need this, we need this. Sometimes they call me in the middle of the night, do you have a milk? I say, yeah, we have a milk, you will come to the store, please. Yeah.
That's, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, I have no question. Uh, if, if this does get implemented, how does this affect phase two? I know that you are talking about putting in another structure, um, further up the road there. Are you all still intending to do that if this goes through? Are you all not intending to do phase two? What's, what's the plan there?
Okay, it, it, this is the over gas station, right? And, uh, we can put the canopy and we can put this, it's not a big one, it's a small, very small one. When they coming in, even most of the circle K, uh, even in the neighborhood, you know, stores, they do have a three MPDs, you know. That extra land which we have it, that's a, that's a little far away. So if we bring that extra land, actually, uh, I have a lot of people, they requesting, even in my store, can you build some extra, you know, the, you know, the shopping center over there? We want to bring food over here. We want to bring, you know, uh, these kind of stuff. So basically, if we go with this one first, then definitely we bring that plan to the city and city will look at the whole layout and I don't think it's gonna affect us at all, you know.
I, I guess where I was going with that is, you know, you, you're suggesting that it's going to be separate, right? The mud truck traffic would be separate.
Yeah.
You are gonna build that other structure right there, are you going to have a, a separate entrance exit?
We have, we have, you say we have big, big land over there. So we have easily one more access on other side. So they have access from there. The truckers, they're coming from this side, they're commuting from this side. The other gas station traffic, they're coming on this side and we have a very big entrance in and out. So I don't think that there would be a problem, you know. Yeah. You know, hardly this store, you know, uh, uh, they're coming around, uh, eight hundred to nine hundred customer overall. And, uh, so the good part about this facility that people, they come in, they spend more. The average ticket is big. So, so it's, it's not a dead thing, it's a traffic keep, because if you look at the morning time, right? Morning time is, uh, is not too much traffic. Uh, people, they come in, then is a break, people, they going out. Uh, if it is a kind of a facility where people, they keep on coming in and on, in and out continuously, that part, it is not that part. But still, it's a, it's a, we have a big, you know, facing towards, you know, R two eighty-eight. So we definitely having a further down, once we have a debt, you know, the, uh, building came, we will have an entrance separately. So definitely. Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
All right, any more discussion?
Yeah. Uh, I'm sorry, what do you mean by mud truck? Like a big four wheeler?
Yeah. Mud trucks, you know, the.
Like an off-road vehicle?
Yeah, yeah, they, they have a four wheeler and, uh, one extra will be big with they always carry.
Okay, and are there any physical constraints that you can install to keep eighteen wheelers from coming in? Like overhead, oning or something to keep the height of the vehicles out?
Practically speaking, uh, you know, these kind of things, it's not feasible. It means we, we need to have a some person all the time over there. So, but with the big sign, definitely, uh, we are not going to entertain any eighteen wheeler. Uh, and we have a, a sign on, going to be on the entrance and sign going to be on the exit both side. So, uh, if you look at right now, it is a big entrance, you know. I don't want to speak such a thing which is not practical here, you know, because this is for all, for us, basically. We are all, you know, people live here, we do the business over here. So if we are making promise that, uh, we not going to allow any eighteen wheeler, so definitely, one is the communication system. You communicate with the people here, you're not, you're not allowed to come in over property, right? So with that sign, we're going to allow you, uh, eighteen wheeler are not going to, you know, allowed at all in this facility. That's a one part. Second most important thing is the operational level. We have SOPs in our operation that we have such a standard which we're going to implement that my manager, I do have actually very good hierarchy in my operation. Uh, I, I'm, I don't have only just a manager. I do have a manager, assistant manager, and the shift leaders in each shift, which they take their responsibilities. And the, all my people, they are locally people. I don't have any hiring from outside at all. So we are very hundred percent sure, uh, they are all the time on the top of their job and duties. So if, if they try to coming in, we're not going to sell the diesel. We have a very strict restriction, no one can coming in, they can, they, they're not allowed at all. So I don't think so. I do have any eighteen wheeler in this area which I need to go into entertain at all. So it's not going to, it's not possible.
But you say you're not gonna sell, but if you have credit card machine at the pump, you know, I can use my credit card or I can use my fuelman card and I can go ahead and start the pump and start pumping. So what's gonna prevent?
Thing is, first of all, in my every shift, I do have a more than one people working in my store all the time. And whenever someone, they use any card, it pop-ups in oversight at straight away. And I do have a very good security system, you know. My people, we going to have an extra cam, camera which is specifically on our diesel side. So my manager, they can see all the time what's, who is standing over there, who is not standing over there. So we do have a very good SOPs. It's not possible at all. Because if, if we want to promise with you, we want to have to entertain, you know. It's, it's, it's not a question, eighteen wheeler is not going to give us some more money. And if we do it, this is not the, you know, the honest business. So I, I don't like to have a business which is the, based on the different things.
So do you have a, uh, design for your sign yet? Can you tell me the exact size it's gonna be?
Uh, yeah, I, I already submitted that how it's going to be on this side, uh, so.
You said that, but you didn't say what size it is or do you know?
Sorry, let me understand again. Sorry, size mean what?
The size of the sign?
Sign of what? Oh, you, or the, yeah, no, I'm gonna submit to you, but if.
So you don't have a sign, you don't have a design for the sign yet?
No, no, we don't because it's, it's not a group yet, you know. So because in the last meeting, uh, they said it's going to come on, you know, uh, discuss again and.
You have your SOP yet?
Yeah, we do have SOP, we can send to you that SOP.
And do you have the spec for the type of camera that you're gonna buy yet?
Yeah, we do have, still, we have a very good camera system. If you guys like, you are welcome to my store and I can show you my whole camera system, security system. I have a big, you know, the monitors, you know, uh, right in front of the cashier register. Plus, we're going to, once we have a debt, you know, the section, we have a specific one cameras for that section and which is all the time showing that recording.
What does it say in your SOP if an eighteen wheeler pulls up?
SOPs, according to the SOPs, if any eighteen wheelers come on and if my manager, they're, they're watching the everything, we will have them to leave oversight ASF. Otherwise, we're gonna to call nine one one. Because we have a sign in, in the entrance, we have a sign on the exit, no eighteen wheeler is allowed. So we are very strict, you know. Uh, we will say with them politely, sir, this, we cannot entertain you at all. Even still, they have some problem, something we can call, call police nine one.
I mean, we've gotta be very honest. When you first came about building that station, we said no eighteen wheelers, right? We don't want any eighteen wheelers.
Right, sir, so we definitely.
Or at least I don't. And the people I've talked to in the committee don't. I can't speak for all of council.
No, definitely no eighteen wheeler. You know, if you look right now, how long we doing business, seven months now, right? And have you guys seen anything, you know, uh, which is out of the norms and which is not good? Yeah?
I saw one thing.
Okay, so please share with me.
You're always out of chicken at five o'clock.
You know, frankly speaking.
I can doubt for that.
You, I know, I, thank you to bring this one up, you know. Uh, I'm definitely going to, you know, in my last meeting, uh, I noticed two things in my operation. Uh, at lunchtime, we're starting at eleven thirty. So they, they actually cook the tenders around thirty, forty. So some customer, they came and they ordered twenty tenders, fifty tenders, and then they start cooking. I said, no, you have to fill it up, that's a one part. Second thing, thank you to bring this up, I definitely take this, you know, uh, have them to open the, you know, kitchen till seven P M. Because, uh, it is important, I'm okay with that part, you know. So, so and plus, you know, my number is on a Google, please, if you see anything, just call me. I only sleep two hours a night, so I'm a very hardworking guy, so I'm okay if you call me at ten P M.
Hey, let's keep it on, on to the topic with, with the fueling stations.
So I, I just had one comment, maybe you can help explain it to me on, with the fueling stations. You said you're not in it to make any money, right? You're saying adding, adding this is not gonna increase your revenue.
No, no.
So obviously, as a businessman, we, we do stuff to produce revenue. And my only concern is I deal with truck drivers all day, about four hundred something throughout the company that, that I help manage. And when my, my truck drivers stop at a, at a station, they're stopping for a thirty minute rest break per DOT and FMCSA guidelines. So if there's no place to park, they're gonna plug up those, those areas. And I understand you're in for a business, you want them to stop there because then they come in and get these fabulous chicken tenders and, you know, purchase stuff in your store that then increases revenue based off of the non-revenue of fuel. My only concern is without an easy egress and entrance of that for an eighteen wheeler to turn around once they leave that proposed exit you have. I've already seen one accident there that required two vehicles to be towed. Now we're gonna have eighteen wheelers trying to pull out and go southbound on two eighty-eight B through a very narrow intersection with high flow of traffic going back and forth. That's, that's my concern and the congestion that it will cause because truck drivers don't just go in and out. They're in their truck fourteen hours a day. When they stop, they want their time to relax, stretch their legs.
So can I say something? Yeah, I, I explain you say a very important thing, first of all. This is not a truck stop. Okay? It means no eighteen wheeler is allowed. I, I, I'm actually, I run the pilot truck stop. Uh, I'm in this industry for more than twenty-five years and I started my life as an evening cashier. I am MBA graduate from University of Texas. I have ACCA degree from, uh, United Kingdom. I have a Master of Commerce from Pakistan. Uh, so I, I'm not just a operational guy, I have a lot of degrees also. And I, I am the, I'm not saying, uh, that I'm the only one person, but I do have a hell of the experience in running the truck stop especially. So for, this side is not a truck stop. This side is a, is a, is a gas station with the three MPDs for only the, because those mud trucks, when they come, it's a big nozzle for them. So any eighteen wheeler come, first of all, they are not allowed. So we will not allow any eighteen wheeler to come in oversight, that's a one part. Second most important thing, only eighteen wheeler trucker, according to the DOT, they have to do the rest. We do not allow anyone to, you know, when, we're not allowing the eighteen wheeler so how they can have a rest in over, uh, you know, the parking space. So it means they are not allowed at all. Now, other people, though mud trucks, those are local companies. What we are doing, you know, I had a great meeting with the pilot, uh, you know, his name is Kevin and he's the head of the pilot across America and Canada. He came to my office because we are, I'm going to Kansas in coming Wednesday. We are buying a one big truck stop over there. We have a I thirty side, we have a thirty-two acre over there where we are putting the pilot over there. So, uh, you know, pilot guy, he came to, in our office and we are talking about the truck stop, we're talking about the parking, we're talking about, you know, we're thinking about three hundred parking in our new truck stop over there. He said, please don't do it. Because trucker, they. Because trucker they come, as per you, you absolutely right, as per the requirement, they have to park, they have to stop, they have to do everything. We have a shower system over there, we have a lot of stuff over there. So, so, so they said in our new truck stop, try to have only fifty and seventy parking. So that they come, they park, and whoever, because the trucker who park, they get the less diesel. So, so in, I'm talking about the truck stop, I'm not talking about this side. This side, I'm, I'm going to be very straight, because just like I have a kids and family, I want to respect this community, e- every household people. Now, second question, answer of your question there, I said that we are not going to make a money. No, I didn't say about that truck, you know, when we adding the part. I said on the front side, fuel man, I am not making any money. Because fuel man, they're just giving me five cent for this side. So if you look right now, the most diesel which I'm selling right now, it is all the fuel man. Uh, because those buses they are coming in, yes, because of, I'm making a five cent on the, on, on a front side only. And you know the almost three cent is cost me the credit card fees. So basically, on those human transaction, we are not ma- making any much mon- money. But those ladies, they coming in, they use the restroom, they have old people, you know, which they're commuting from one, one side to other side. That actually, you know, are helping for the community, second thing, they are spending the money inside. So if I'm not making a money on the one side as a businessman, but I'm making a money on the other side. So for example, if I don't have a dead fuelman card, whatever money I'm making it, I'm not making even that portion. Because those people, when they cannot use the card in my side, so they're not going to stay, stop in my side. So definitely, we going to make a money on our trucker side, uh, that's a small thing which we're going to make it, but eighteen wheeler is not allowed. There is no way they can park, there is no way they can come into my side, and there's no way they can, you know, go, go anywhere. No, we going to be straight, that's period, that's the way I'm going to run it. But if you see anything like that, you're welcome, you can make us accountable, call us anytime, we definitely will do it, you know. Because we are not doing any business with, uh, which is going against the city or against the people over here, that's simple.
I had a question.
Yes, please.
Um, so if we approve this, is there any way to expand the turn lane there? Turning left out of the gas station on the two eighty-eight B, because twice so far, if I'm turning right to go towards two twenty. I've, that first lane has been blocked by a dump truck that's too big to make it into the turn lane. And it's kinda stuck there, and people are having to go around them, swerving because it's right past that intersection. And it's been dangerous, and I've been waiting for an accident to happen, and that's, and, um, I think that Mr. Escalante saw an accident that happened there. Um, is there anything we can do to make that safer? Because that one is my biggest concern, that turn lane.
Okay, so, uh, I, I cannot say yes or no right now, because you know, it is a, our, you know, the, you know, the requirement from the, you know, the, uh, DRT, so- Texas door, so, but the only one part, you know that, uh, we do have a entrance from other side. We have a, that's a very big entrance, we have entrance on two eighty-eight also. Frankly speaking, you know, practically, I'm seriously telling you, this is a really, really, very big, you know. Uh, in and out, but still definitely, we will try, uh, as much as possible. Uh, if that possible, I, we will apply the application, we will have them, and plus, we, we own this land, right? So also, I don't think so there would be any problem. We can tell them, hey, we going to adding this, because of adding this, can we extend this section? So I think we, we will definitely do it, you know, if it's possible, we will give our best, and if that happen, or if, if I have another, you know. For example, let's think about from this part, we, I have entrance from here, I have exit from this side, right? Think about, if we add this right now, we definitely go to the Texas door, and we can add extra one on this side. So or that, that entrance, we will have them only for the mud truck, and we keep the same thing for other commute people all the time. Yeah, definitely, I will try, you know, there is, we will see definitely.
Anything else, Councilman Strong?
No, I think that was my only question, thank you so much.
No, thanks a lot, man, thank you, is, any observation, please let us know.
All right, any more discussion from council?
I just wanna say thank you for, uh, showing up and talking us through a lot of these things. I know a lot of this stuff is, is, uh, personal to you, to you-
No, no, it's important, thank you.
You know, I, I think that y'all are providing good service to the community.
Thanks a lot.
You know, I, I, I know I go over there every so often, but like Mike said, they're always out of chicken, so not too happy about that.
No, definitely, we will improve more, because no one is perfect, first of all, nothing is perfect in the life, every day is an improving day. Anything you guys see, other than this truck, whatever diesel side we're talking about. Anything, even then you think about that, we do not have anything in oversight, and you want us to have it, please let me know. Because I'm adding the more novelties, uh, I'm actually, uh, adding kind of a more clothes section. Uh, I will see where, you know, people, they, they come and they buy more clothes, you know, like a beach clothes, any, uh, other than that. Because I have, I know a lot of novelties people, so I'm in a process right now. I, I have a lot of plan in my mind, you know, which I can, I have the community, they, once they coming in, and they, they look for the, any things, they can find it. You know, just like one customer, they asked me about the Spanish, you know, salmona bottle, glass bottle. Right now, because of the COVID, you know, that there's a production problem going on in Mexico, everywhere else. So, but still, I already placed order. One customer asked only for one item for us, for the beer side.
I, I appreciate it, sir, let's keep it on topic to the truck though.
So thank you, thanks a lot, anything else?
Anything else from council? All right.
Thank you, thanks a lot, thank you, sir, thanks for the opportunity.
I guess discussion for us is like, if we foresee it being a concern that an eighteen wheeler would become a habitual problem there, is there some sort of contingency that we could say, hey, we'll revoke your use permit? If it becomes a habitual thing, right? We could say, hey, if you aren't gonna enforce it, then we'll take your, your-
Sure, but what do you do once you put a tank on the ground and you've got two stations there sitting right there?
Well, that would force them to actually have to enforce it, right? Because they're not gonna wanna not run their business, right? So if it becomes an issue, which I don't think it will, right, number one, but number two, if it does, and we see it becoming a trend, then then we can say, hey, we're gonna revoke their use permit, and then they're up free. And they don't want that, because then they're not making any money.
I'd like to maybe get chief, maybe your, your perspective on it, because the, the level enforcement was, we'll ask, and then we call nine one one. So nine one one then gets dispatched to, like I said, dispatched to your office. So how, I mean, how does that play out? How does that enforce, or is that even creating more burden upon your force?
Well, of course, any call, a call for service creates more burden, right? So I don't think it's wise to put the police in a position where they have to police someone's business, how they run their business, right? Can we? Of course, if he calls the police because he has somebody on his property that he doesn't want on his property, we can ask them to leave. If they don't, well, then we can take some type of accountability action, but I think it's why-
That's a worst case scenario, right? I mean, he's gonna ask them to leave, number one, and then if they refuse, then he'll call you, and then you'll ask them to leave.
Exactly, exactly, and chances are, that second time, when the police ask you to leave, most of the time, they, most of the time, they'll listen.
Thanks, sir.
Yes, Ms. Glue? Please identify yourself and address, please.
Hi, Leslie Glue, one oh five, I'm in Bird Court. I just wanted to make a couple of comments, listening to what he said. Um, one of the things that he commented was that Buc-E's doesn't allow trucks. And he's right, I've never seen an eighteen wheeler try to get into Buc-E's. My dad was a truck driver for years. They communicate with one another, they know which stores are allowed, which stores aren't allowed to, uh, fuel out. Um, also, he, Mr. Escalante mentioned that there's gonna be a truck stop going in, what, less than five miles down the road then. I'm pretty sure that word will get around pretty fast, that that's where you get fuel, and that you're not allowed to get fuel up here at the corner. So again, like I said, I know that they communicate. And word gets around pretty fast, where you do and don't stop, so I don't, I don't foresee it being a problem coming from a truck.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, anything else, council? Any other public comments?
Take action there, right?
Use of truth?
I'd like to, to make a motion to amend the conditional use permit of property located at forty-four hundred Bridgeport Boulevard north of the corner of SH two eighty-eight B and FM two thousand four to allow for fuel, diesel fueling stations, limited to two stalls, four pumps. Uh, is that fair, sir?
Yes, yes, sir.
Uh, with a, do we have to put the condition for the eighteen wheeler signs?
So we'll just put with the condition of, uh, pro, reviving the eighteen wheeler?
Yes. I think we also needed to find what an eighteen wheeler is per DOT, that's anything over twenty-six thousand and one pounds, which can include a five axle truck. Even a dually with a gooseneck trailer with nine thousand pound axles is considered a DOT vehicle. So-
Is this what council wants? I mean, it's Mark's motion, you're wanting in your motion?
Restate your motion with, with that, or-
How you want it?
Or continue with that.
So Mark, make your motion how you want it to be passed. We'll either get a second or we won't, and then we can make another motion with how another councilman would like it passed.
Can I table it, and we discuss, and then I can bring it back?
You can withdraw your motion?
Yeah, you can just withdraw the motion.
Okay.
You haven't really made it yet. So, I mean, it's something-
I felt like I did.
I mean, if, you can withdraw it, just withdraw it, we can talk, or we can talk after you make it.
So what's the concern? Do you, do you not want a diesel truck with, with a trailer? Is that what you're, you're getting at, or?
We say eighteen wheelers, and we're saying large trucks, so, uh, for example, a roll-off truck that's a five axle, that is pulling a pup trailer, that's not an eighteen wheeler. Doesn't have eighteen wheels. It, it's still long, it's still eighty thousand pounds, it's still a big vehicle, but it's not an eighteen wheeler.
Class B, right?
Yeah, DLC.
Class A? Class A?
Correct.
So you wanna say no class A? What's all in class A?
Just saying dually with a gooseneck is a, be a farmer, right?
Requires a class A CDO as well.
If it exceeds the weight.
Two thousand, twenty-six thousand and one.
So do we want to restrict class A usage? As opposed to eighteen wheeler usage? Is that what we're trying to get at? I, I'm sorry that I'm not down with the semantics on eighteen wheelers and what defines it and it doesn't.
So you're gonna have dump trucks coming in, dump trucks?
That's, that's the intent, right, is the dump trucks, that's what he's trying to service. Like he said, it's got tanks on both sides, he wants to service those guys, high glow pumps, right? We don't want these big, long trucks that are gonna cause the, the traffic, in my opinion. Um, and so I will amend my motion to state restricting class A vehicles, um, from being used at those pumps. If you don't mind, we state that, in that way, it's clear.
So you want me to make it clear?
No, she was, she was a job manager.
So you wanna motion to approve the amendment with conditions restricting class A vehicles from being used at proposed diesel, that's a proposed diesel law?
Yes.
Or put fueling stations, since that's how it is, and that, um, again, that's okay.
All right.
Melissa, were you clear on his motion?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
All right, go on once, do I have a second? Going twice? All right, third time, second. All right, we have a motion and a second to approve an amendment with conditions restricting class A vehicles from being used at the proposed diesel fueling stations. Uh, roll call by position, position one?
Aye, will all the conditions met?
Position two?
No.
Position four?
Nay.
Position five?
Yes.
All right, and- I'm gonna vote nay, in belief of what the original council, when this originally came, what they intended, what I believe they intended. And the differences of vehicles between a mud truck and a van, trailer, eighteen wheeler, what we may be thinking. All right, thank you, sir, for coming in.
Thanks a lot.
All right. Item B, public hearing and action to consider a variance in special use permit for property located at nineteen eighty FM two thousand four, Richwood Plaza. To allow a keynote game room to operate within a B one business district. All right, uh, Mr. Terrell, would you like to speak?
Thank you all for the opportunity to begin, this is, as most of y'all know, this is our second visit. Uh, I've since met with Mr. Porister and the chief, uh, and explained our position a little clearer on exactly what we want to try to do. Uh, based on our last meeting, uh, it appears that they supported, and I'm back for reconsideration from the board to allow the variance.
Thanks, sir. All right, council members, any questions or discussion?
Yeah, just quick question, when was that meeting with the chief and the city manager?
Two weeks ago, yes, two weeks ago.
So about the first of June?
Yes, we're, we're, we're on it.
So the, the only, one of my biggest concerns, that's always been, is safety with game rooms. Um, and I can look at, on May twenty-second, the evening of May twenty-second, there was a robbery of a game room on two eighty-eight B. And that getaway car, that was a stolen vehicle, was ditched at our local Richwood Exxon. Because when I came back from South Texas, I pulled up and saw a crime scene unit at the local Exxon, I was like, oh, wow, what, what's going on here? Immediately, um, called folks at the sheriff's office, and they notified me, hey, there's a robbery, a game room, right down the road. And everything was ditched in Richwood, and they took off. So that's, that's my big concern about game rooms, there's already about ten of them on two eighty-eight B, which clearly on the evening of May twenty-second just kind of elaborates that, that, that is a high crime environment. And, and not saying that yours is gonna be, because hopefully you, you have some good mitigation factors. But that's just my concern for the community is, it's already a couple miles down the road to the north of us, do we bring that in to our city that we're trying to keep as a better community?
My response to that would be, you have the same danger with the convenience stores you have in the city. If somebody wants to rob something, they're just like Franklin D. Roosevelt robbery. You'll find out, some of these game room, uh, robberies that are happening. This particular one, I understand it is gonna be an inside job of a girlfriend, have these guys set up and wait for this person that brings their money in. The biggest, the biggest difference of our game room is, I go to every game room in Missoria County, I get paid cash at every game room in Missoria County. Our game room is not gonna operate that, that is an illegal way of operating, that is not our attempt whatsoever. I've invited the chief, city manager, any of the council members, any one of this community wants to come in there, sit there all day long, we will not pay out cash. So therefore, our cash flow in that location will be nothing compared to what everybody else's, as far as our, our cash on hand. Uh, I even talked with the chief about hiring some of his officers for security on busy nights. You know, like a Thursday, Friday, Saturday night, just to have that police presence there.
I'm not sure I follow that logic.
What do you mean?
You're not paying out cash, so therefore, you're going to have more cash on hand for more people that are putting cash in there.
No, the cash will come out, we'll take the cash out all day long, there will not be that much money held there. We don't have the need to hold that. All these other game rooms have to keep twenty, twenty-five thousand in cash on hand to pay out. Some of the, the jackpots they hit are ten thousand dollars, most of the game rooms go to five thousand. So, you know, one person gets five thousand, they gotta have that five thousand dollars cash there, we don't have to have any cash there to pay out. Everything we, that comes in the door will be received, soon as we get a certain amount, we'll get it out of the building. We're not gonna house it there, because there's no need there. And there was a game room there, in that particular location previously, and Dr. Anderson and his assistant, the scars, I look back, and they never had any trouble there either, back then. That I don't personally know about, she was just telling me. And this is a special use permit, if anything comes up, then we start having problems, you just shake the problem, if we shut it over. And I don't even know how well this is going to go, because it will be the only one in Missouri County that does not pay cash. We're anticipating, with just talking to the senior citizens that we've talked to that play all the time, that they would love to come and just have an opportunity, because if you come in and you play your money, say you win something, you cash out, we're just gonna write you a voucher for credits when you come back in. So say you cash out a hundred dollars, you'll get a voucher for a hundred dollars worth of play. You'll come back in, we'll give you the hundred dollars in the machine, not to you personally. So, a lot of our business won't be there that's in the normal game room, because we're not paying cash.
So they're not walking away with anything?
They will walk away with zero dollars.
Store credit is all they get.
So customers won't have to be worried about carrying money out of the store, we don't have to worry about keeping money in the store to pay out. This is a completely, will be for entertainment value, which is what these game rooms were designed to be in the beginning, but everyone in Missouri County pays cash. And that's why I invited the chief, or Mr. Forrester, or any one of the councilmen that would like to come. Come sit there all day. I don't have a problem with you being in our business, because it's 100% legal.
Has the city reached out to the neighboring businesses? Because I reached out and spoke to the ladies at the hair salon, and some of the employees and the patrons there, and they were all, seemed very concerned, because a lot of times they're there late in the evening, it's about 8 o'clock sometimes, by themselves usually, and they were a little concerned about safety, being right next door to this game room. The city sends out public notice regarding this issue, but it's to property owners. So a notice was sent to the property owner, but it's one person that owns the entire plaza.
And I will say, Ms. Garza has spoke to her tenants, and they were in favor of it, based on us having security there, they felt more comfortable.
And I was gonna say, it's also published in the paper.
Yeah, they did reach out to me, which was why I'm saying something. I wasn't sure if anyone else had been reached out to.
No, no one's contacted the city based on the public notice in the paper, and in writing, mailed out to the surrounding area. So no, no one has contacted the city regarding this.
Okay.
And I do know the beauty shop is in that right building, they're supposed to relocate to the third building, and the eyelash place is relocated, and the sunzam thing is going to Lake Jackson, so that whole building will be empty on the right-hand side, and that will be where we'll be at.
I spoke with Mr. Anderson, who is the property owner, and he has had meetings with me regarding other endeavors and this one, to see what he needs to do to help, help make, help this move along, because he's in favor, and he owns the building. That's the only contact I've had.
You will have that entire right building, sir, after the other tenants move out?
Yes, sir, after they relocate.
I think he's looking at it.
But they had a break-in, I understand, somebody broke in, and somebody got caught in one of the buildings, and Ms. Garza went and talked to the tenants, and they thought it would be a great idea, because our security will be there, whether it be the police department that we're using on weekends, or my, I run a security company, so I'll have a security guard there all the time. But they'll be able to check the perimeter, make sure all those buildings are secure, not just, you know, only ours.
Councilman Brown, you were saying something about in writing, what could we have in writing?
I was just wondering, he was giving the statements from the interviews with the tenants, if any of them had submitted their...
Oh, yeah. Didn't spoke negative.
Ms. Garza just told me a little bit.
All right. Counsel, any more discussion or questions? Is there any public comments on this item? Who would like to speak at this time? All right. Do we have an action? All right, go on once. Going twice. All right, action fails for lack of action. Thank you, Mr. Terrell.
Thank you.
All right. It is time now, 18:53. We will convene the Board of Adjustments meeting and move into planning and zoning. I'll convene the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, thank you, chief. Monday, June 14th, 2021, we are beginning at 18:53, at Richwood City Hall. All right, roll of call, roll of council members, all members still present? Public comment? Miss, nope, sorry, nope, nothin'. Any public comments that didn't make it onto the sheet for planning and zoning? All right. Item four, consent agenda, approval of minutes from May 10th, 2021. Any discussion on the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve consent agenda.
Second. All right, I have a motion and a second to approve consent agenda for the meeting minutes of May 10th, 2021. Position one, how do you vote?
Aye.
Position two? Councilwoman Strong? Thank you. Position four?
Aye.
Position five?
Yes.
All right, all in favor, approved consent agenda?
Item four.
All right. Item five, discussion and action items. Item A, preliminary review and action of replat of lots 167 and 168, block one of Oakwood Shore subdivision section one, also known as 33311 and 33319, Blue Marlin Drive. All right. Any discussion on the replat?
Property owner's present, I have all clear from HOA, everything's good with the engineers, plant, or plant review, apologies, and everything's clear on the city side.
Anything you'd like to say, Ms. Wartell?
No.
You're good?
We got a clear precedent, so it's just...
All right.
Make a motion to approve replat of lots 167, 168, block one of Oakwood Shore subdivision section one, also known as 33311 and 33319, Blue Marlin Drive.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I have a question.
I'm taking Councilwoman Strong, beat him to the front.
I have a question.
Oh, yeah, oh, sorry, sir.
Was 33319 ever platted with any other piece of property, or is it standalone?
Standalone.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion made by Councilmember Brown, and a second by Councilmember Strong. Position one, how do you vote?
Aye.
Position two?
Aye.
Position four?
Aye.
Position five?
Yes.
All right, all in favor, approve the replat of lots 167 and 168. All right. Thank you, and at this time, it is 18:57, we will close the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. All right.
We'll do the final approval in this next meeting, but you don't have to stay if you don't meet, you have anywhere else to be, just letting you, it's not required.
All right. Good evening again, everyone. We will convene our regular Richwood City Council June meeting at 18:57, here, here in Richwood City Hall, as well as online, on Facebook. I didn't say it earlier, but thanks to everyone who is, I don't know how many, but those that are logged in on Facebook and watching, it's good to see that we have that ability now, as well as some of the participation, so, thanks for that. All right, roll call of council members, we are still all present. Public comments. So we have Ms. Klug at 105 Honeyberg.
It's yours regarding your agenda item?
Yes, regarding mine.
Okay, she's on the agenda.
Okay. All right, no public comments? Any other public comments that didn't make it to the sheet? Item four, consent agenda, we have item A, approval of minutes from May 10th, 2021, the budget report for April 2021, and appointing Jeremy Fountain to the Keep Richwood Beautiful Commission.
Motion to approve consent agenda, second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to approve consent agenda, items A, B, and C. Position one, how do you vote?
Aye.
Position two?
Aye.
Position four?
Aye.
Position five?
Yes.
All right, all in favor, approve items A, B, and C from consent agenda. Number five, discussion and action items. Item A, final review and action of replat of lots 167 and 168, block one of Oakwood Shore subdivision section one, also known as 33311 and 33319, Blue Marlin Drive. Any discussion, counsel?
Make a motion to approve the replat of lots 167, 168, block one of Oakwood Shore subdivision section one, also known as 33311 and 33319, Blue Marlin Drive.
All right, we have a motion on the table. Second. All right, a motion and a second have been made. Position one, how do you vote?
Aye.
Position two?
Aye.
Position four?
Aye.
Position five?
Yes.
All right, all in favor, and approve the final review of the replat.
Before we move on, we'll get these MYLRs signed, and I will go file it. If you happen to get another MYLR printed, and you want it for your record, bring it back, and I'll get them to sign it at another meeting and file it for you, because you paid for the recording of it already, and then we'll get that to you.
All right.
Person of that one I need to sign?
Yes, so just whenever you are free to leave your home.
Two weeks.
Whenever you're free to get up here. There's no rush on getting the recording, they don't update B-CAD except for once a year, so...
Okay, so I'll give it a few more days.
By December, please.
No problem, thank you.
Tough timelines. All right, moving on to item B, discuss and consider approval of an ordinance authorizing the issuance of City of Richwood, Texas General Obligation Bonds Series 2021, and levying ad valorem tax, authorizing the execution of a transfer and paying agency agreement, and other matters in connection therewith.
I'm gonna write, John? Okay.
I didn't write that.
That was a long one.
That's a lawyer.
Copy and paste.
Well, that's lawyer language right there. Good evening. In front of you should have a presentation that looks like this. I do have some great news report, I think I'd rather be lucky than getting it the other week. We entered the market at an absolute low point. When I was out here, May 10th, we, the bond buyer index was about 19 basis points higher than it is today, and now we're only five basis points off of all-time low. So we did a great job in the market, investors were pleased, and they were interested in buying bonds for the city, and we got a great rate, and I'll go through that with this presentation. But the first page of the presentation is the bond buyer index, and then this is the weekly average I was talking about. Looking to the far right, we sold general obligation bonds that voters approved, and the current rate is 2.07%, and if you look over there in that box there in blue, the all-time low is at 2.02, so we're only five basis points above that. So, again, it was a great time at the market, and as a result, we got some great rates. On page two of the presentation is the final sources and uses of funds, this kind of spells out how the funds were sold, what investors paid, and the cost of issuance, and what proceeds were being generated from the city. We sold 1,940,000 bonds, investors paid a net premium of 194,000, meaning they paid more than par for the bonds, lesser cost of issuance, about 90,000, excuse me, and for proceeds, the city of 2,45,000, which is the remaining authorization for your bond election in 2018. The all-cost trigger rate is at 2.094%, and just keep in mind, that's for 20-year debt, so that's a great rate. The average life on the bonds is 12.12 years. On page three is the final debt service requirements. Going from left to right, there are a lot of numbers on this page. You have the current debt service requirements under outstanding obligations there in the far left, principal and interest in total, plus the new bonds there in purple, again, 1,940,000 in principal, 610,770 dollars in interest. And there in the orange, you have your debt services paid for by the water sewers, and the far right is your total tax-supported debt service requirements, that you will be levying ad valorem tax to pay for. It's about 700, about 475,000 for two years after this year, and then drops, so you have capacity in future years, and that's the way we structured it, to give you flexibility going forward. On page four of the presentation is the tax rate impact comparison, what we told voters in November of 2018. The blue bar chart there is what we told voters, we showed them we had a maximum tax rate of 17.5 cents, and again, this is just for the debt service or the INS tax rate, not the total tax rate. You also have an MNO, or maintenance and operations proportion of the tax rate. But we're well below that 17 and a half, we were projecting the maximum to be about 13.2, based on the sale, and then drop from there to 12.75, down to 12.1, down to almost 11 cent on the INS for the next four years. So we're well below what we told voters, and means we did a good job, y'all did a great job managing your financings, and we hit the market at the right time to sell the bond obligations. And then this is more detailed on page five, this is the backup for how we got to those tax rate projections. The tax rate is actually there in yellow column, and then the debt's there in the purple green, and the debt service paid by the water sewers there in orange. But we structured it so that we keep a 15% debt service coverage requirement going forward, so you always have on hand 15% next year debt service, in case there's a drop in values or we don't hit the projections like we projected here, and the value growth. To accomplish the sale and to execute the sale, we're asking you to approve the sale of the bonds tonight, the nice legal language we read earlier, we're asking you to approve that. If you approve that, then we will work with Attorney General to get the bond issued approved, and we'll close on July 13th, at which point you'll receive your funds for the projects. Happy to answer your question, you have the bonds, we were very pleased with it, and I hope you are, too.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from counsel? Or discussion?
You said July 13th.
It's about, they require about three weeks, and then just get everything filed, and Attorney General does, so two months.
All four are just, but how are we looking on timeframe to start spending that money, so we're not holding on, like, I know you got it, but I just wanna make sure we're not paying for stuff, or we're waiting, and we have this cash on hand?
Yes, sir, we're gonna...
I know we wait for engineering a lot.
We're sure we're ready. We're ready to go on streets. We're gonna, we're gonna deal with drainage, shelter, a little bit of things.
Awesome.
Cliff is always ready to spend money. That's a good trick.
Make a motion to approve an ordinance authorizing the issuance of City of Richwood, Texas General Obligation Bonds Series 2021, and levying an ad valorem tax, authorizing the execution of a transfer and paying agency agreement, and other matters in connection therewith. All right, we have a motion on the table?
Second.
All right, we now have a motion and a second. All right, position one, how do you vote?
Aye.
Position two?
Aye.
Position four?
Aye.
Position five? All right, all in favor, ordinance authorizing the city issuance is passed.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'll get you that paperwork as soon as I can.
All right. Item C, presentation and discussion regarding requests for modification to city-owned parking lot to assist pedestrian crossing.
Good evening, and thank you for your time and consideration on this agenda item. I'd also like to thank Mark Guthrie, because he took the pictures from his phone. also like to thank Mark Guthrie, because he took the pictures from his phone of the parking lots that I'd like to bring to your attention. And I don't know if my pointer will work on there or not, and it won't. Okay, so what we're looking at is Audubon Woods Drive as it goes towards Pulp, and this is the parking lot that's near the PK Forest Building at the bottom. And the parking lot at the top is the one that I'd like to draw your attention to. A lot of parents will park at this parking lot by PK Forest and walk across to gather their children, because the children come in from a path that you can't see under those trees. Yeah, it's actually not that path. It's down a little further over here, and it's on one of the next slides. So, this is a close-up of the parking lot that I'm actually asking about, across from the PK Forest Building. And let's see. Ideally, people wouldn't block the driveway that's right here, but unfortunately, they frequently do as they're lining up, because it goes to one-way traffic on that, on this stretch. So, as we're lined up to pick our kids up, we're actually lining up in this lane, going that way. But people do, they'll block the driveway. And then what happens, unfortunately, is that parents who are parked across this way, and then in the parking lots up at the top, when they see an opening, they'll make a mad dash, get in line and make a quick train where nobody else can move up. So, if I stop here, then they get, you know, into a hurry, and then sometimes their kids aren't even buckled up. I've seen them just, the kids are barely in the car, and the car's moving to get in line to get out the one opening. So, I think if we make a crosswalk there, which is what I'm asking for, a crosswalk there and in the parking lot, I think it can settle people down. So, what we're looking at on this one is the black is where the existing paths are. The children will walk down this black path on the right-hand side of the screen, and then they cross the parking lot to get to the black path on the other side of the screen. And like I said, when people, you know, let people out of the parking lot, and the parents are in a hurry, and they're like, oh no, nobody ever stops for us and lets us out, so let's all rush and get out at the same time, like I said, children walking across there are in grave danger of getting run over, crossing the parking lot in front of people that are pulling out of those upper parking spots. So, what I would like to propose is that we paint a crosswalk where all the white lines are, so that the children enter here, then they walk around the back part of the parking lot, and then out this side, or they could walk across here. Their parents could walk across to pick them up. If people stop, you know, like I said, if they just don't, aren't allowed to block the driveway, I think the people that are in the parking lot will feel a little more secure about, oh, I'll be able to get out, and they won't try block me, and it's trying to get out and kill people. This one probably may not be needed, because ideally, there wouldn't be traffic coming this way, because during school hours, it's supposed to be one-way traffic. But what happens is occasionally, you'll have a parent pull out of the school and turn right, because there's not a sign in front of the school that says you can't turn right. Sometimes the police officers will sit there, but they're usually sitting at the corner of Wisteria and Audubon Woods Drive, so they don't even catch them. So, that would be the purpose of having the warning on the side also.
I'm a little confused. You're saying that when people come out of the parking lot, they're going back out that way?
Yes, they have to turn that way to go.
I thought it was one-way.
Well, the one-way starts about right here.
The one-way starts right about there?
But people will, as soon as they make this turn.
Yeah.
They immediately get in line, in line here.
Right.
And stay on that side the whole way.
Yeah.
On this road coming down, they're staying in the right-hand lane where they're supposed to be. But even though the sign says, the sign doesn't start until here, but says one-way.
Okay, I thought the sign started further back, okay.
So, they're allowed to turn right out of this parking lot, they're allowed to turn left out of this parking lot. They're not supposed to be coming this way from the school, but.
I just stay away from it when I get off work early.
It's crazy. It's crazy. And this will probably be the only year that my daughter will, that we might use the parking lot. I always end up in line and just go pick her up at the school. But as you can see, you'd have to put curves or something there to keep the cars from going over the line into what would be a walkway area.
Well, I mean, you can't block the back corner, because that goes back toward Cliff's Wells, right?
Right, well, and that's why, if you look on the next screen, or not, yeah. So, I would suggest, my suggestion would be to have signs that let the children know, you know, stay in the crosswalk, or don't, what did I have in here? I had stay on crosswalk, don't cross the parking lot, something like that. You could even put arrows in the little walkway areas, make it fun, make it like, I know during quarantine, a lot of us did sidewalk chocks, where we did like zigzags and stuff like that. You could do something fun like that to make them, you know, so in this part of the walkway, you do zigzags, and over here, you hop, or what, you don't have to, but it'd be fun. But these purple areas are where you may have to expand the, like, in the corner, that would be where you'd use the utility trucks to get to, is that pump section over there, or what is that? Okay. So, you'd have to probably make part of the, expand the driveway over there, and you'd probably have to expand the driveway over here on this bottom purple spot, just so that there'd be room to get in and out of the parking lot easier for two-way traffic there. Any questions?
Are there vehicles parked in there, like, when the kids are getting off of school, where the yellow concrete bump stops?
Yes, they park, they park this way where those are, but you can see the stripes where they actually really park this, they're probably.
You'll see people parked in there just hanging out.
Yeah, all times.
Well, as soon as, hey, as soon as school lets out, I've never seen anybody in that parking lot outside of school hours. I haven't. I mean, they, maybe they park there for, I think, I think, though, I take it back. I think one time I did, somebody at the house that was back here was having a party, so a lot of the people parked there. But yeah, people will park this way, here, you know, just facing that way. And most of them will back into the other spots, but the ones that don't back in are actually more of a danger than the ones that do back in, because when they're backing out and children are crossing the parking lot, that's where I see near misses.
So, I have a couple of things. One, I think it's great to bring awareness to this. My first, I guess, point that I want to try to get to is pay a lot of money to BISD, and child safety should be high on their priority. I noticed that a lot of the new schools that they're building, they have enough parking and one-way, so that you have these people not, you know, waiting in a parking lot off of the campus to pick up their kids, right? And I was just wondering, is, should this be brought to the school board as opposed to being brought to the city council to try to improve on this child safety?
Right.
Issue, right?
Yeah, I didn't know who to talk to, because I know that it's a city-owned parking lot, and that the city uses it to access the.
Well, I also know that the school has a ton of area out there that they fenced off that is for their use.
Oh, I agree.
Right? And if this is an issue with child safety, why don't they put in a parking lot for pickups, if that is what they would like to do?
Yeah, I agree. I think that something definitely needs to be done, because.
We're wearing down our streets, our parking lot area, and.
And the people that live along Audubon Woods, well, I think it's north of Manhattan on that side, it's, I've seen so many almost fights, because people, you know, pull up and think they've got room to get out of the way, and they don't, and so somebody's trying to get in their driveway, and they're going.
I've witnessed fights over there, just to pick up your kid and get one car in front of somebody.
Yeah, it's crazy. It's crazy. So, yeah, I agree, but I know that seeing kids cross this parking lot concerns me, because.
I just know that this is set up as a parking lot area. We have our crosswalks. We're in good shape here, and this is going to cost some money, right, and some labor. Is, is there a better alternative, right? And should this be something that the school district is addressing and not us?
Right, well, it's a city parking lot, and so if city's gonna allow kids to, parents to park there and things like that, at some point, if somebody gets hurt, it is gonna fall back on the city. So, my concern would be to block it off if you're not gonna let, if you don't want parents to park there.
My position is, this is a baby. This is fixing the problem, right?
Right.
I don't know that the city has ever been approached to even see if this law is okay to be used by the school, have we? We don't have any kind of, like, any kind of agreement. I think they just use it.
Yeah.
Because it's there. I, the city has it, we don't have any formal agreement with the district for this to be a pickup location.
And that's a good point. What would happen if you just put a bar across that? Where would those people go?
Parents are gonna park over at the PK Forest one, then, and they'll pick up there.
Because as a city-owned parking lot, I mean, couldn't we enforce no parking from this time to this time?
We could.
That prevents, you know.
You're gonna have a lot of angry parents.
Well, they can line up on the street like every other.
We have a lot of safe kids.
Yeah, oh, I agree. I agree. I'm just saying that I know a lot of parents that they, they would like for their kids to be able to walk to there, and they get in the car, and then take them home. That way, they don't have to.
To avoid the line.
Stay in line and go all the way around the whole neighborhood.
Up and down Wisteria.
Which BISD should address, because they have the property, they have the money to fix the problem, rather than us burdening.
What really concerns me, ma'am, is, is though I think it's a great idea, and the objective is worthy, I deal with grown adults every day, trying to get them to follow signs and painted markings on the ground for health and safety.
And I know people park in front of your house and just walk, so they don't have to do the whole, all the way around the neighborhood thing.
What concerns me with this is, they're not gonna use it. They're gonna walk straight across, battle these resistance.
They're gonna do the same thing they've been doing.
Yeah. Like I said, I understand your objective, and a way to get there is great, but I think this would, we would go through a lot of effort, and we would see the same thing. They're not walking.
Yeah, my first idea with it was to have, like, almost like, banisters or something that would block off where the white is on, near the stop signs on both sides. But then I couldn't work out how to let parents from the PK Forest parking lot get to their children if they couldn't get through the gate or whatever, to get past the stop sign on this side.
The other thing that does concern me is, is though this parking lot does get limited use, when the practices align between all the sports, soccer, the baseball at the non-fenced in area, and then baseball practice for the fenced-in area, large community events, this gets used, and cutting out, I don't know how wide that would truly be, you know, three feet, five feet for the crosswalk, you really gonna narrow the, the amount of spots that could fit in there? But you're not gonna narrow the people that are willing to try, and how many, how much more congested that parking lot becomes. And then, you know, it'd be minor accidents likely, but still, it'd be accidents, I think, would be increased when, when we need that parking.
Do we have any records of car accidents in that area, or?
Certainly not in the, I mean, in the parking lot itself. There hasn't been any in the three years that I've been here. I haven't heard of any before that.
How wide would, Chief, do you happen to know off the top of your head how wide a crosswalk would have?
Is there a guideline, or we could make it as wide as we want?
Don't give me a line. I'd have to look it up.
It's at least every ADA client.
Four feet?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's same as the sidewalk. You have to come around every hundred feet.
So, instead of cutting into the parking lot, could you put it behind the parking lot, then? That, that's, of course, a lot more expensive than just painting stripes on them.
I mean, I would think what would still be least, if you're, if you're having kids that would potentially, you know, use the driveway to cross, then you may just be more efficient going in front of the parking lot and having a walkway, and then keeping, you know.
Oh, having it across the driveway.
I don't mind the lines that go across the Audubon Woods Drive, you know, just as a heads-up, some awareness.
Are you saying to make a part, make a sidewalk that walks alongside the street, and then they cross the driveway?
The grassed area between the parking lot currently and Audubon Woods Drive.
Right.
It would just be, I mean, it would be a little closer to the road. You would need barricades.
Parents getting out of that driveway, then, would be waiting for.
Right, but.
Ever sometimes.
I think that's where we just need to get away from, from it all, right, is just put a bar up and say, no parking during this time, right? And then all the kids are safe. You reduce your potential motor vehicle accidents, right? And people will just have to wait in line, and tell BISD does something about it, right? They should, they should be looking into a solution for their traffic problem, for the kid pickup.
I don't wanna step on anybody's plans here, but the one-way sign can be backed up as well. We, it's, it's never in favor of this. It, it took cars broken down three streets and put it into one. But it also seemed to be beneficial, being able to do one-way traffic and enter from the left-hand lane, instead of cars coming and looping. And, but we could, it could be backed up to the corner and eliminate these parking lots altogether. That way, they'd have to.
They could still get into the PK Forest from where the maintenance building is, right?
Now, we back it up.
Oh, yeah.
And eliminate all the traffic altogether. That, that would be the only other option I would do.
I'm confused on how you would stop it. I mean, you would just mean that they could only exit out to the right, but they could still leave?
It would be, it would be one-way from, from the corner of Audubon Woods Drive, North Main. From that point, they would have to turn down, they'd have to go towards the school,
right? Right, but they'd still fill the parking lots.
They could fill the parking lots, but they have to come out this way. They would still have to funnel out the same way, which is a problem where they're going opposite directions out of those parking lots. It creates.
Yeah, that's not as much of a problem as getting them all wanting to get out at one time and not paying attention to the children walking across the.
I think moving traffic with a line all the way down, sitting still, is a, you know, one lane's completely dedicated to people sitting, and then the other one is, is used. And then, like you said, you get the people who don't read the signs and come wrong direction still, and that creates, I've seen that create havoc.
Even on Audubon Woods, right, whenever all those cars are lined up, they're blocking the crosswalk to go from crosswalk to crosswalk right there across the main road.
But they're not supposed to park at the park and walk across, right?
Well, they don't enforce, I mean, the city doesn't enforce that either. Not the city, the school.
It's not the city to enforce it, right? It's, that's where I'm, I'm at, is, this is BISD.
But it lets, the school lets them walk across when they tell them, they tell parents, don't do this, but then they let the kids walk across. I, I would be in favor of a bar, except I think the same thing. If, if we don't have public works swinging before and opening it, or closing it, and then afterwards, they'd have to open it, then for the events that we do need it, practices, community event, I mean, is it, does it get left open? Is it, I mean, it's just.
Yeah.
Hard to manage.
Is there a liability with, and this is not your fill-up, I don't question, is there a liability with allowing the school to take children off of school property onto city property for after dismissal?
Yeah, they don't walk them all the way down. They walk them.
So, the children walk alone to this parking lot? They allow them to walk?
The, the children walk from about that pump, or even, it might even be the corner before the little pump station thing.
So, they're allowed to walk to.
No, they walk a little further, then they walk the rest of the way by themselves.
To get picked up, and the school knows they're getting picked up by cars.
School knows they're getting picked up there.
See, that, my son's school requires us to have a tag with who you're picking up, and we gotta drive through, they gotta see the tag that you're supposed to get that child in.
Yeah, I think.
Because anybody can pick up any child there at that point. That's a huge liability on the school district.
I think it's because, once they're off of school property, they feel like it's not their.
So, they consider car riders or walkers?
They're considered.
Sidewalkers.
I think they're, yeah, sidewalks is what they're called.
As far as liability goes, it's definitely something that I'd have to do a little bit of digging on, but, yeah, I mean, that's something like that.
Somebody else picks up somebody else's child, and it's on a city parking lot. I didn't, I didn't know until you brought this up, that even the school district used this.
Yeah, I don't know that the school would say that they're allowing it. That's just where parents park.
I think us doing this is enabling that.
Yeah.
From a logistics person who has to handle this part of it, if it does become an issue, it'll be my issue.
That makes sense.
I, I handle insurance, and so I.
Kirsten, that's exactly what I was thinking too while I'm listening to this.
I'm not, I'm not comfortable as a staff member, but that's my recommendation.
Yeah, that one made me really nervous.
If something happens, it's, it's gonna be a.
How many cars could hit?
T-mail issue.
Twelve cars?
Um, if you see, you can see the white line where they actually park already. So, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15 across the back, and probably at least 12 or 15 across the front.
So, we're saying there's 20, 20 vehicles that will be impacted if we put a bar up?
We'll probably have to wait 10 more minutes for them to pick up their child.
It, it's a little more than that, because as one pulls out, somebody else pulls in. It goes on for 20 minutes. It, it's a little more than that because as one pulls out, somebody else pulls in, so. It goes on for twenty minutes.
I just looked at the satellite view and I see at least eighteen cars parked there.
So if you say.
If you look at the satellite view right now on the Google Maps.
We're just not gonna use that area. Then it takes the liability away from the city, right?
Yeah.
Takes away the logistics and insurance and stuff that she has to worry about, you know, so.
That's scary for me.
Okay. All right.
But thank you for bringing this.
Yeah, I just, I, I was like, okay, somebody's going to get hit for people driving like that and.
I still feel like BISD should do something about it.
Oh, I agree. I agree. It's, it's a pain.
I mean, this may be, um, we may need to reach out to the principal and discuss for next year.
Mr. Rayburn, I'll go with the understanding.
Not allowing it.
He's not gonna be at the school anymore. He's, he's not.
Mr. Rayburn's not gonna stop.
Right, there's a new one. Yep, yep.
Okay, uh, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Leslie.
All right, so. All right, so no action for that one. All right, moving on to item D. Discuss and consider awarding Matula and Matula Construction with bid contract one dash twenty twenty-one for the twenty twenty-one Richwood Street Improvements. Cliff?
So we hosted, uh, hosted the bid opening for the second phase of street repair, Matula and Matula Construction where it was the apparent bidder. Um, uh, base bid, alternate bid one and alternate bid two. I tried to include in the memorandum uh, explanation of what all was covered under those bids and, um, we're asking you guys to award the project from Matula and Matula. If you have any questions, Jared's here, Strain Associates. And answer anything you can.
All right, short and sweet tonight.
Hope so. This one should be.
All right, any questions or discussion, counsel?
Thank you for including all that information in there.
Sure.
Like to, uh, make a motion to award Matula and Matula Construction with bid contract one dash twenty twenty-one for the twenty twenty-one Richwood Street Improvements.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All right, we have a motion and a second for awarding Matula and Matula Construction to contract. Position one, how do you vote?
Aye.
Position two? Councilwoman Strong?
You.
Sorry, I got it. Aye.
All right, position four?
Aye.
And position five?
Yes.
All right, all in favor for awarding Matula and Matula Construction with bid contract one twenty-one, twenty twenty-one for the twenty twenty-one Richwood Street Improvements? All right. Item E, discuss and consider resolution approving spending plan for projects recommended by staff using fund from the American Rescue Plan. Who do we have for?
I got it. Mayor, council, uh, we talked a while back about the American Rescue Plan. We got, uh, the start of that up and running and what we needed to do was now look at, uh, the actual projects that we need to start moving forward on and let me get my cursor back to where it belongs. So what we did was we got with staff, uh, to, to look at the planned items that we could use, uh, our money for on the rescue plan. And as you see, and it's kind of small print, but if you look at the local fiscal recovery, um, fund and under eligible uses is water, sewer or broadband infrastructure. And that's the, the amount of money that's available to us at local governments. The next, go ahead and go to the next slide. Next slide, uh, again, is just further illustration of what, what can be used. Drinking water, waste, waste reuse, wastewater, stormwater, energy efficiency, fiber cables, treatment plans, storage, public access and new systems. With that, using those criteria, uh, we got with Cliff, said, where, where can we best use our money for the biggest impact? And go ahead and go to the next one. And the next one. And that, this is the list that we came up with. Basically, we're looking at well number five, uh, generator with transfer fifty-four thousand, well number six, uh, fifty-four thousand. These are both system redundancies, um, as you're well aware during the freeze and the last power outage we have, we lost water pressure, both of these would have stopped that. Then, uh, the four hundred and seventy-six thousand, I believe, I can't see, um, is, is our ground storage down on the south end of town, new pumps, motors and pipes. These were all part of our capital improvement plan. So one of the nice things about this is that the, the two, well number five and number six, uh, the, the redundancy was not part of the plan, but they were not, were not identified. The four seventy-six is part of our capital improvement plan. Uh, and that will be a big additional help to us if we can get this done. Uh, consolidation of all electrical components at the lift station one, service center, SCADA system, fire department repeater building, community building, all which are located at seven twenty North Mayan. So we're looking at seven hundred and ten thousand. We're looking at about eight fifty-ish or so for the ARC plan. Uh, there, there will be some administrative costs built into that, that which will be your grant administrators and some engineering will be built in that. So we're stopping there at about seven hundred and ten thousand. Total cost will be included in the ARC plan. If there are any residuals left over from this, uh, backup generators for lift station three and four, which is additional ninety thousand, that brings it to total to eight hundred. But I don't think we're gonna have room with engineering and administrative costs in there. So we're looking at the first portion as seven hundred and ten thousand. So we're bringing this to you for discussion and, uh, your thoughts on this plan.
Counsel, discussion, questions?
So on the American Rescue Plan, is this different from any funding that we would be receiving from the freeze and the emergency funding?
Yes.
What's the anticipated amount that we applied for, for the freeze in that?
You recall it?
Freeze?
It's not much.
It was only like thirty thousand.
Yeah, and that's to cover expenses that have been incurred?
Yes.
Yeah, so it's a reimbursement.
But there's no FEMA or anything from the declaration for any bursting of pipes or any generators?
No. This plan is, is a, here's what you can have if you spend it the way we want you to. The other plans were.
Recoup your costs.
Mm-hmm.
Your expense.
And again, we, what, what we did, counsel, is we, you're looking at, uh, one of the, one of the big expenditures here is the four seventy-five or four seventy-six. Uh, this is a great opportunity to move that off of your capital expenditure or, uh, CIP program. So we're moving.
Second, Eric?
Yeah, go ahead.
All right, let me interrupt you. The, one of the reasons, yeah, it was identified, uh, on the CIP, but also this site is, um, it's about forty years old and it began systematically failing about two or three years ago. Valves, check valves and things of that sort. One of the last, um, last instances that we did lose pressure, you guys probably remember, is we lost a, well, we had SCADA communication problems for one and we lost one of the booster pumps. It, it tripped and we found out that the pump is now pouring at its max amp capacity. It's worn out. Um, to rebuild it's over half the cost of a new one. Um, it, it's, it's coming up. I, I'm, I'm afraid that we're gonna be incurring this debt within the next three or five years.
We are going to incur this debt.
We all, we will.
Trust me.
And, um, coupled with this and the north water plant and power redundancy at our well sites, you know, we have the potential to be sitting fairly pretty here within a year and a half as far as water infrastructure goes. Um, and not incurring any more debt and still achieving the capital improvement projects we need to, to, to get right. The only question mark out there would be an additional well. It's, uh, this would take care of a large portion of that, a large portion of our worries.
So this is planning for grid type failure like we had. This, this keeps us pressurized and keeps our systems working standalone.
Make sure that all our water producing infrastructure is, uh, has integrity and operating.
So that's the seven hundred and ten thousand and then the backup generators are, if you come under, is that?
Yes, sir. Which I, I doubt we will. The, the costs are going, you know, by multiples of two point five daily.
Yeah.
It's, it's insane, but, uh, you, you have administrative costs, you have engineering costs that are built into that. So that's a conservative estimate, but yes, if, if we can, we, we would love to, to do three and four. Three and four is not a must-have, but.
Yeah, three and four wouldn't resolve the issues we had. The first four line items would resolve that.
Yes.
And I see we, we're focusing all of the, the funds right now on what's deemed as, uh, enhancing critical infrastructure defined as water, sewer or broadband. We're focusing on water. How about sewer? Cause I know we have a lot of sewer issues throughout the city. But can any of these funds be utilized to help improve our, that infrastructure?
Yeah, they could. I, I guess they could. They could be utilized for, uh, for pipe bursting. Uh, one, one of our.
We, we, in, in the consolidated backup, uh, lift station number one is covered in that, uh, one twenty-five. Um.
Yes.
And, and number one has always been the, the point of contention. Number three and four, we can move backup generators to now. We have, we have portable generators that will get there. The problem with these, uh, long-term like pipe bursting and, and these type projects, they're, they're very, very expensive. You know, they're, what do we just do? However many feet.
Yeah, walnut?
Yeah, that's hundreds of thousands of dollars, so.
Yeah, it, it can get, it can get very expensive, I guess from a, I'll say a broken system standpoint, but from standpoint of an old system, you know, water, water is our biggest concern right now, especially with TCQ compliance. Uh, not only fixing issues from the bad past, but looking into the future and having the capacities. Um, wastewater, I agree with Roy, it needs help. It, it definitely does. It's just trying to pick the, I think with the, with the best bang for our buck at this point in time. And that's how we, how we approach it.
How about, um, I know I sound a little biased here, but it, it's listed as a critical infrastructure broadband as well. Um, expenses and that says just like capital investments in infrastructure systems and operational expenses during the pandemic. I know during the pandemic, I mean, I believe we gave fifteen thousand dollars to BISD and that was also to help with critical infrastructure for all the children that didn't have internet access. That was one of the main focuses. I remember when we passed that. Just curious how we could improve broadband as an investment in our city for future growth.
Last time I looked at broadband for a city, uh, city about this size, it was two point eight million dollars for the city.
Defined as what? Cable, fiber?
Wifi.
Cause I think most of the city has cable and fiber already.
Yeah.
That's what.
Say most have cable, probably. Third has fiber maybe.
Mm-hmm. Depends on where you are.
Yeah, it depends on where you are.
Okay.
How does that work? If, I mean, you provide the wifi, a large enough network that would cover?
Mm-hmm.
But that's not something that AT&T or Comcast or somebody comes in and runs, right?
Well, we have, we have wifi now or, or you have the capability to do wifi now. You just have to pay for it. I'm, I'm sitting on five G in Oakwood Shores with my phone.
But no cable or no fiber?
But no cable or no fiber, but if you wanna go down and buy a wifi puck, you got five G available.
All the towers are full. No, no service, no connections.
I, I can say from working for a broadband company until I can, um, a small project for BTO to install fiber in a part of Brazoria, which is a very small town like us, was over three million.
Oh, yeah.
So eight hundred thousand is not gonna, it's not gonna do anything.
No, I'm just viewing it as a, what's being defined as a critical infrastructure and as we, we saw during the pandemic and even during the freeze, once internet goes down, everything goes down. And when you don't have internet, then you have no infrastructure.
Something like in Brazoria, maybe working with the city, BTO could extend it further or something. Um, but we don't have a provider here. It's really interesting.
That's, that's the issue.
Just not enough market.
Yep.
Yeah. Let's say TCQ compliance would trump, uh, internet.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm just saying, if, if we're looking at all three spectrums of water, sewer and broadband infrastructure, water definitely for sure is a priority, but as we invest in our community for growth to, to receive more revenue, that's gonna be a determining factor.
State, state department first.
Oh, yeah. Totally agree, but saving four hundred and seventy-six thousand on capital improvements, that's, that's a home run.
Paying for it.
So. Yeah, you pay, pay, pay for everything. Yeah, nothing's free.
All right.
So if, um, if council is good with staff recommendations and just need to approve the resolution, just so we have it.
I think there was a second one, right? There was an alternative?
It looked like the same thing. It looked like it just a repeat, but it had a different title on the.
On the, or, on the resolution?
You had ideas and then you had projects.
I didn't wanna put ideas in a, on the resolution. I wanted it to be formal, that that's the projects we're looking at. I just changed Eric's words.
Thank you.
It's the same, same exact chart though. A copy of each chart. I just didn't like the word ideas in a resolution. I'm sorry.
Those words were different.
They can just get mad at me if I have these words.
What's that?
Nothing. It's a later meeting. It's another meeting. Oh, that's not, not on the agenda.
All right. So, uh, we do need a motion to approve a resolution if council chooses. There's no more discussion?
I make a motion to approve the spending plan for projects recommended by staff using the funds from the American Rescue Plan. As discussed.
All right, we have a motion on the floor?
Second?
All right, a motion and a second to approve a resolution, approving the spending plan. Position one, how do you vote?
Aye.
Position two?
Aye.
Position four?
Aye.
Position five?
Yes.
All right, all in favor, approve a resolution for spending plan, project recommended by staff under the rest, American Rescue Plan. Moving on to item F, discuss and consider approval of an ordinance amending Appendix C, fee schedule of the code of ordinances, revising sewer rates and facility rental rates.
That's me.
All right.
So, um, you have attached the Appendix C and Kirsten went through and made red and crossed out the old fee schedule and added the new. So I'm gonna go kind of page by page. Um, the first page is our rental fees and I had Laura from the front office call all the surrounding cities and get their rental rates and deposit amounts and, and things, um, to find out where we fell in with the other towns. And it's hard to compare apples to apples. Um, but we felt like we got a good idea at least and we were low. So we have raised some rental fees for the PK Forest building, the Richwood Municipal Pavilion and the Bobby Ford Park Pavilion. Um, we also are proposing to eliminate the additional deposits that were required. Um, they really didn't serve a purpose and just muddied up the, the processes a little bit. Um, we also took away the rental fee for the barbecue pit at the pavilion at Ellis Park. Um, it seems like if you rent the pavilion, you should get the, the barbecue pit. Um, so, um, that is the first part. Um, it's, we, uh, we're, can't talk, we're proposing raising the fees, um, for the PK Forest building from one ten a day to one fifty. Uh, the Richwood Municipal, which is Ellis Park, um, from one hundred to one twenty-five. And Bobby Ford Park was listed at, by the hour, it was the only one and, and I don't know why. Um, so instead of twenty-five dollars for two hours, we're proposing seventy-five dollars a day. Each rental fee has another twenty-five dollars additional if you're not a Richwood resident, so that, um, those fees then just follow that same increase. Um, the, so those are the changes on that one. Uh, police security fee is the same if they, if they have alcohol or a large. Um, police security fee is the same if they if they have alcohol or a large crowd, they have to hire security. And, um, if they can, there's to hire a Richwood police officer and they get paid thirty-five dollars an hour. If they use our electricity or anything for a moonwalk or waterslide, they have to pay twenty-five dollars, so that's what those are. Um, the next page you can skip because there's no changes. And the next page you can skip because there's no changes. And the next page you can skip because there are no changes. So then you come to the water rate fees. And, um, as you know, we had a a rate study done by Strand and Associates, and what they recommended, um, in order for us to raise enough revenue to cover our water and sewer debt requirements and our operating costs, was that, um, we raise water rates beginning next year and sewer rates beginning this year, and then there would be an increase every year until fiscal year twenty-four, which ends twenty-five. Um, so what I am asking you to do for this year is to raise, um, the sewer rate, um, which is, um, it would go from twenty-four dollars and sixty-five cents for the bonus, for base rate to twenty-five dollars and forty-seven cents. So if I could do math in my head, I would say that's ninety-eight, eighty-eight cents, six, seventy-eight cents, something like that, it's eighty, something like that. Um, and then the amount for excess usage over two thousand gallons would go from four thirty-five per thousand to four forty-seven. So it's not a major increase, um, but it's part of the plan that Strand proposed, and then each year we would come back to raise to the next level. Uh, I believe in your packets, you had all five years included.
Yeah, these aren't windfall profits we're looking at, this is, this is definitely revenue recovery, that's what we're looking at.
Yes, just to keep the enterprise fund on a positive, um, as they pay off debt, um, with the North Water Plant debt and everything else, um, just to make sure that we are staying on a positive, not a negative. And it was from the rate study that was conducted by Strand.
So if I could, um, facilities, we're paying taxes to maintain them. Uh, so I really don't like that it's going up so much, uh, to be able to use the facilities that I'm paying to maintain, uh, somebody that's not a non-resident, sure, they don't pay the taxes that I do, so, um, I'm good with that, but, I I really don't like that idea.
So part of the reason for the increase, as I said, we compared it to other facilities, comparable facilities, um, also the cost to the city.
What's a comparable facility, the PK Forest Building?
I would say Jasmine Hall.
Yeah. And it's, it's still more than what was.
They both have.
Still more than your your new proposal, yes.
And our, um, costs, um, we're losing money as it is. Even with the increases, we're not making money on these rentals, we're recouping some of our expenses. Um, there's still a benefit to the to the residents. It's, um, when the PK Forest Building is used, we pay a cleaning per, uh, I don't know if it's a company or a person, once a month to come give it a deep clean, but, um, Public Works goes every time after and cleans the whole building. Um, you know, that's a, that's an expense, um, additional.
And then I have to leave it broom clean?
They're supposed to, to get their deposit back, but we still have to.
And they do, they do for the most part, but it's, it's the details that somebody's gonna come in and see and nail it on every time. They get a call, I get a call, I get a stop, it's, we always go behind it.
And Cliff and his guys did a lot of work on their own, we didn't hire any contracting or anything to get it painted and floors done, and they really did a lot of work last year, and my recommendation was to add a cleaning fee, so we could get it cleaned weekly, because that's less work that his guys are gonna have to do to keep it a nice facility.
The problem with adding a, because we discussed adding a cleaning fee, is then the people have no incentive to.
Clean it themselves, so we didn't.
Oh, I paid a cleaning fee, I'm giving all this.
Built it into the rental.
But it does say on the application to rent that if it's not left as they found it, they will not get their deposit back. You know, at the, at like Ellis Park or Bobby Ford, the pavilions, you know, I mean, they're open to the public, anybody can go in those, but we're giving them dedicated use. Um, but so there, you know, we go back and the tables are a mess or the garbage is overflowing. Um, there's, there's costs to that still from Public Works. You know, and we also, um, if there's a party and they know there's alcohol or a large crowd, you know, the police are doing additional patrols and, you know, there's, there's several costs to the city that you don't really think about. I mean, it's hard to put them on a ledger. But so I I felt when I set, when I set this chart up, that we were still giving a good value to our residents, because they're still much lower than other cities. Other cities are charging, you know, I I think I sent the, I don't have it in front of me, I forgot to grab it, but.
I'm pulling it up, and I, I'm not seeing this in the packets, and I really apologize if I forgot to put our memo in there.
Oh.
If, I will email it out, because I don't think y'all seen it.
I did a really nice memo.
He did, she did, and she included the 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 comparison that they did that I asked her for, and I I don't think, I think I missed it, I so.
But yeah, I think the the key takeaway on this is, two years ago when they, when they had to redo the building.
Here's the comparative chart of area, of area.
They robbed Peter to pay Paul, we took money out of other accounts.
Apologize.
The building should really take care of itself, at a minimum, and and even at this new cost, it's the very minimum.
That, well, what good are we doing then?
Yeah.
And you know, we want to provide a service for our community by having these, but like, now, I will be the first to admit, I don't know any of these other facilities except the ones in Lake Jackson, I just, I've never been to one.
So the Freeport Velasco Community Building is not their river house, it's not the one that you're thinking, that most people think of when they think of the Freeport Building. That one is comparable, pretty comparable to ours in Jasmine Hall, it's an older building, has a kitchen, probably about the same amount of people can fit in it. Those two, I think this list is pretty accurate, Klute Civic, Klute Center probably not, it's a much nicer, can have a caterer kind of building.
You look at that Angleton one, it's seventy-five dollars an hour.
And Angleton's is a small room that you get inside their their, um, Recreation Center, they have a small room that you can run out, I think that's what that is, and that's probably about the same amount of people with no kitchen.
And I will say, we are turning people away constantly for rentals, especially on weekends, um, because there's.
They're below, it's below cost, right?
And there's a lot of demand, so I don't really feel that.
Are they residents or are they non-residents?
We get both, we get both, but we, it's, you know, and so we may be turning away residents because non-residents are taking the spot, it's a first come, first served thing. We're not gonna call and cancel a reservation for somebody that lives in Lake Jackson because, you know, Mark Brown from Richwood wants it. Um, so by raising the prices, um, we may get to where we're serving more Richwood residents also.
I definitely don't like running in the red, that's for sure.
No, and I knew talking like that would.
Would bring you.
Buzzwords, Mark's buzzwords.
Do the other cities break down resident versus non-resident, do they?
These are resident, um, rates, I believe.
Yeah.
Yeah, see, it says resident, non-resident on a klute.
Yeah, repeat, okay.
So the ones that do, she marked.
So Lake Jackson may not, but.
But so, um, I just, one of the first things I was told when we came here, well, when I came here, we weren't renting anything because of the pandemic, but when we started renting, it's, you know, he groaned and, um, started talking about how. And everybody started talking about how we lose money on it, so I I wanted to start looking at it, and so I had Laura make those calls, and, you know, I am, if I could give everything away to the residents for free, I would, so I'm not one that's trying to build the residence, I just want to to try to recoup our costs and still keep it a value for the residents.
Sure.
Any other questions?
I mean, these items, uh, I guess it would be good for me to see when we do these increases, at least for a set time afterwards, putting some of that back towards that building, because I know Cliff can be counsel, uh, either last, last year or the year before, and we told him quite frankly, no, we just didn't see the the priority at that time. But if we increase rates, you know, and it's time for an uplift, you know, I know, they did a lot of their own.
It would be nice to to be able to isolate those ones.
We do, we do put them to an isolated GL account, you know, so we can see the comparison in rentals. Now, for a couple of years, it's gonna be hard to compare, because we had a whole year where we didn't rent.
Yeah.
Um, and it's very hard to put a cost to it as far as, you know, the Public Works time, because it's just part of their day. So, you know, we do pay, I think it's eighty dollars a month to clean the building, um, which is a steal. But the guy is willing to continue doing that, so, um, you know, it's.
So if we did that weekly, if he did it weekly, we can assume it'd be three hundred and sixty, so, or three hundred and twenty.
And he really just gives mainly with the with the floors.
Yeah, he comes in and gives them a good scrub.
Yeah, he gets to deep clean it on the floor.
Well, I guess that's a, I mean, do we spend eighty dollars in your employee's time each week?
Well, the thing is, it's not each week, it's after each use. So let's say, because it's summer, a kid's gonna have a birthday party on Wednesday, well, then Public Works needs to go in afterwards and clean. Then we might rent it again on Friday, and then again on Saturday. So we're talking multiple cleanings each, you know, each week possibly, so, um, this is just, it's, you know, we're not, we're not, um, trying to turn it into a moneymaker by any means.
I just worry it's not enough to.
I tried, I, I.
To get costs out.
I got on one of my little cleaning things too.
And and maybe next year, you know, we can, I can do some more analysis, I couldn't do any analysis on it with not renting it, and it really, the concern to me wasn't really evident until we start renting again.
We just started a market.
Next year, when we come back to you, because we will be coming back to you for the water and sewer rates, um, we might be able to take a look at it again and say maybe they need to go up more, maybe they're too high.
Could you pause that for us?
Here.
Yeah, what is the the five-year?
So.
How much?
Yeah, and I apologize, I didn't know you guys didn't have this. The current year, the current is what we're charging right now. The October twenty-one was, which is the beginning of fiscal year twenty-two, they did not recommend we go up on water, but they recommended we go up on sewer, so that's the twenty-five forty-seven. Then they gave us an end, what we should end with, uh, for fiscal year twenty-five, which starts in October twenty-four. So what I did is I just, you know, divvied it out. So, um, each year we'd have a slight increase on both. Until fiscal year twenty-five, we would reach what they said was our target for covering our expenses for debt and operating.
Probably about the time we probably need to have the rights reassessed.
Yes.
Well, I was just trying to do a rough analysis of how big of a jump would it be to go all the way, because one thing we've heard from residents over the last couple of years is it's every year there's increase, there's increase, there's increase. And although they may not see that we took a five-year plan and divided it equally, they just feel like it's an increase, it's an increase, so I don't know if there's a number that we could go to one time and cover.
And I will say, you know, Freeport just went up a huge amount.
Huge.
And it was on the front page of the paper, but then it was on the front page of the paper this weekend, I don't know that it was the front page, saying, um, but at least they're still lower than Richwood. Thanks.
Right, that's, that's a hard thing to say.
So.
And it's, uh, to do a finite increase, and to, you know, there's a lot of factors there, the private water authority.
Infinite variables.
Yeah, there's infinite variables there, so you could deal with it on paper here, and next year turn around and see an increase for whatever reason, but we can never do say that for sure.
And we may decide, there may be some capital project, we we decide to go out for bonds again, our debt changes or something, and so that's why we're doing it on a yearly basis rather than doing it all.
We discussed proposing the whole five-year plan in this fee schedule amendment, but I didn't, similar to how council stance is on the diesel pump, I didn't want to put us in a five-year plan and then later councils may not be you guys, and then them not want to go back on what y'all had put into place for the next five years when we possibly fiscally needed, so we did see the benefit of doing it annually.
And now that the rate study's been done, I, you know, I understand what they did, I didn't know what they were going to do, but I can go in and I can tweak it as needed to see if this needs to adjust each year. But right now, this is what they're recommending we do, and therefore that I'm recommending we do.
Any other questions or discussion, council?
I had one on the, um, theme for the facilities, but I didn't find it good time to help in earlier, sorry.
I forgot about you.
Sorry, um, so the additional, it doesn't show on here any additional deposits required, so if they have alcohol or over fifty people, are we requiring an additional deposit for that just in case things get broken or messed up?
No, um, I took away the additional deposits, because from what we could tell, they had never, um, really served any purpose. Um, where they get into additional, um, requirements with that is if they have alcohol, a small group with alcohol must have an officer hired, a security officer. If it's not a Richwood police officer, it has to be a.
Certified.
Certified Texas peace officer, had to get that wording from Eric. Um, if they go over fifty people and and alcohol, fifty people and or alcohol, I think I'm wording that wrong, but anyway, then they have to have two. So they're paying that additional security. So the.
I just wanted to make sure that that was being left in, because I feel like if you're having large groups or alcohol, there should be an officer, that way we're not supplying that, they're paying for that.
Yes, in the.
And it's on the rental agreement.
In the contract rental agreement that they sign.
Four hours, minimum?
Um, I don't think there's a minimum length of time, it's just during the event.
I thought they had to have a minimum amount, but obviously.
I don't know, I could look, but, um, the, we cleaned, we cleaned up the wording, I'm sorry.
No, no, I'm sorry, I have such a delay over here. Um, I just wanted to clarify, you know, that that was staying in, because I do feel like that's beneficial, because with larger groups, you just need to be, you need to protect, since it is nestled into neighborhoods, you know, we just need to check for it.
Yes, and the the wording was rather vague, Laura, who processes these on a continuing basis, wasn't clear exactly, so I met with Eric and we went over a little bit and just cleared it up, um, that, you know, what's required and how many and and what the stipulations are, yes, definitely, they have to have a security officer in uniform.
Perfect, just, just to protect everyone, you know, at the party, but also the residents, you just never know.
But.
Police, police officer.
Police officer, peace officer.
Police officer, yes, not security officer, yes.
Yes, um, yes, and.
Can you sort of flip back to that, I just wanted to get to your.
No, that's fine, and so that's why, and I I talked to Laura quite a bit, and she said that that additional deposit was more just a a hindrance to people as far as, because they have to pay all of that upfront, um, and then we have to process it to pay it back. So, um, it it really wasn't serving a purpose.
Okay, perfect, just curious, because I just thought it was taken off, I just wanted to make sure if that, please, y'all, or if it wasn't.
No, and if any of you want to see the rental agreement, um, you can, I I just didn't include it, because it, nothing really changed, I just, we cleaned it up.
All right.
Thank you, I'm sorry I had to flip back to that, sorry about that.
You're fine.
And only one change I want to make on this, um, ordinance, I'm gonna relabel the municipal park pavilion as Ellis Park.
Oh, yes.
Before I submit it to mini-code, so it's official, I didn't realize it still said that either.
I didn't either until I was reading through.
I was changing fees and didn't even see that.
So any other questions?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right. Council like to take any action?
Sure, I make a motion to consider the approval of an ordinance amending Appendix C, fee schedule of the Code of Ordinances, revising sewer rates and facility rental rates.
All right, we have a motion on the floor?
Uh, he said to consider, shouldn't we approve?
Would you like to amend your motion?
Sure, I'll amend my motion, I make a motion for the approval.
Thank you.
Of an ordinance amending Appendix C, fee schedule of the Code of Ordinances, comma, revising sewer rates and facility rental rates, period.
Second.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor, position. Position one, how do you vote?
Aye.
Position two?
Aye.
Position four?
Aye.
Position five?
Yes.
All right, all in favor of item F, approving ordinance amending Appendix C Fee Schedule of the Code of Ordinances? All right, moving on to item G, discuss and consider proceeding with drainage repairs and improvements in the order prioritized by Strand Associates not to exceed the amount of one point five million dollars.
Well, so we had, you know, council members, we had a workshop in February, on February twenty-second, which is basically to outline the deficiencies noted within Richwood Stormwater Drain System, uh, which was one of a few priorities of the Stormwater Master Plan. But in regards of moving forward and, um, putting good use to this bond money, um, we'd like to recommend that we proceed in the manner which Strand presented these projects, which essentially is from downstream up, they're starting at the beginning and we're gonna work our way back. Uh, the, the citywide stormwater master plan capital projects costs that you guys received, um, the third item down, which is gonna be the Sandstata Street, Success Street, Culverts, that's, that's actually gonna be in the streets project in the base bid. So we've taken care of that, but it is still coming out of the same, same purse. Um, so, we're, we're anticipating getting through the, the east ditch improvements and west ditch improvements, um, and we will move on to the other items noted, which is Yopon, uh, East and West. The only thing that's not noted in here, Strand did raise a caution flag about the, the pass-through culverts, the cross culvert, culverts under North Mayhem, uh, close to Audubon Woods Drive. Uh, that is a, that is a bit of a bottleneck. Um, the other ones were identified in the, in the write-up, it looks like they are. What we have to remember is that without the improvements on the ditch, you're only getting about half capacity of most of the pass-through culverts of the, especially the east ditch, uh, that serves Davidson Slater, Audubon Woods Two. Um, so once those are cleaned out, we're gonna see improved performance from those. So there might be one additional cost for the cross culverts under North Mayhem. Other than that, we'd like to adhere to this list exactly as it's laid out. Not to exceed one point five million dollars.
Is that, uh, do we have proposal for those two crossovers?
Uh, no, we don't, we can, we can get cost opinions on them.
Okay.
Uh, right now, at this point in time, we feel like we're gonna cover one hundred percent of the east ditch and west ditch improvements. If anybody's not familiar, that's the main outfalls. The main outfalls that serve both sides of town. Uh, we think we're gonna get completely rehabilitated, uh, with concrete bottoms, um, and also a few other improvements we can make, uh, as a city, coming back after our operating.
Thank you, Cliff, any questions, discussion?
Progress.
Yes, sir. I think this is gonna be good, but, uh, we think that, um, a lot of defined areas, we've seen problems in the past, uh, being, um, Quell Run, everybody's heard complaints on that, flooding, um, Westeria. A lot of that is, is attributed to the, the lack of flow that we get from these main outfalls. We believe those problems will pretty much solve themselves, so hopefully we'll, uh, we'll do a lot of good with the main outfall rehabilitation.
Thank you, sir.
Hmm?
So do we need to action to proceed?
Do we take action?
No, I think they're just wanting their approval, you didn't give, do you want a motion to proceed?
Um, yeah, that kind of stayed as the way they, they recommended, so.
Okay.
I guess it'd be good for council to sound off on that, so we, we have a plan.
All right.
Make a motion to approve proceeding with drainage repairs improvements in the order prioritized by Strand Associates not to exceed the amount of one point five million dollars.
All right, we have a motion on the floor? A second? All right, we have a motion and a second to discuss, or, excuse me, to approve proceeding with drainage repairs and improvement. Uh, position one, how do you vote?
Aye.
Position two?
Aye.
Position four?
Aye.
Position five?
Yes.
All right, all in favor, passed, drainage repair improvements prioritized by Strand Associates.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cliff. All right, moving on to item six, capital improvement projects update. Cliff again?
I forgot, I didn't want to sit down. Um, so one of the, um, I think one of the biggest news on the capital improvement front is the, the grant that we recently applied for, the mitigation grant. Uh, it was about three point two million dollars, so we deal with the streets and drainage on Briar Creek, Quell Run and Four Oaks. Uh, we did not get awarded. Um, I've instructed Strand, we did have a, uh, one of the bid alternates, um, was, uh, Stretch of Street, which is probably the Magnolia on the map, but Briar Creek where it goes to, um, two thousand and four, the exit of Audubon Woods Two right there, that's gonna be redone, and we've approved them to go ahead and do that since it's not gonna be covered in the grant. Um, we've got a lot of, we got a lot of input, a lot of information from Grant Works. This is brand-new news, we don't know where this is going. Uh, we assume that our, um, that three million dollar projects as we submitted are probably not gonna be conceived in the future if there's additional funding. Uh, Jared, do you know how to say with any degree of intelligence what happened with the city of Houston and?
Uh, yeah, so part of the grant scoring was, there's a, a large, a lower moderate income component, twenty out of a hundred points was allocated to that. And you either, you either met it and you got the full twenty points, or you didn't meet it and you got zero points. So I think what Houston and Harris County ran into is, they couldn't, they couldn't find areas and the projects didn't benefit people in areas where there's lower moderate income. So they're, they're playing on a short stack, they're playing, you know, a hundred points, they're starting at eighty. And so, they just, they couldn't overcome that, and that's what happened with them.
They also petitioned to somebody for-
And so, as a result, based, uh, petition to the general land office that they feel that they need seven hundred fifty million, seven hundred fifty million dollars. Uh, the general land office had said that they're gonna, uh, round two was gonna be one point one billion, so the seven hundred fifty would come out of that. So, there's roughly three hundred and fifty million left for projects to fund it. The list is incredibly long, um, we got ahold of the scoring, um, and kinda looked at where different projects fell and felt even with, even with, e- even if Houston and Harris County don't get any money, the way the project was scored, the Richwood project was scored, they probably wouldn't receive funding if the projects above it. Uh, there are indications that they may change the, the scoring criteria, but, uh, we're not sure.
I think the, I think the opinion that our, our cost of beneficiary ratio was probably a little too high. Um, but it was, we tried, um, there is, uh, as far as mitigation goes, there still is a floodgate project out which we're probably fix, start moving on, or, uh, yeah, RFQ for-
The competition?
Services, yeah. Um, but that's how we're proceeding with that. Um, sidewalks, that's all been done, it's waiting on it to dry up. Um, we're gonna get the bridge installed when we done. Uh, the, the streets are also gonna take care of the base bid. A section of Moore Street sidewalks from Moore Street Drive to, uh, to West Mayhem. Uh, the bid alternate two, we weren't able to afford, there's another two hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars, two hundred and forty thousand dollars in sidewalks, which we, we didn't have due to what we spent on Moore Street Drive and South Yoke.
Can I ask a question about the grants and how we keep getting suggested to move forward on these things from Grant Works and then it ends up not working out, you know, and months later, where it's like, oh yeah, we're, we're definitely qualified and we're gonna be able to get these projects, and then it's like, we go, oh, well.
Yeah, yeah, I, I understand where you're getting at, Mark.
And we're like, nope, sorry.
I don't think, I don't think that, that would necessarily be the case. We've been approached by GLO that we, we do qualify for these grants due to what the, the city went through during Harvey and other events, and then we, we apply for them. Uh, I personally think Grant Works, you know, has been awarded plenty of grants for, you know, other, other clients, it's just not, it, it's not panning out for us.
But just keep in mind, they don't make anything unless we get approved, so I don't think that they would-
Yeah.
-petition for our business if they didn't think they were, they're in the business to make money too.
But I understand where you're coming from.
It doesn't, it doesn't.
But it does, we, yeah, we don't make anything.
This last go-around, uh, I, I knew we weren't gonna get. Uh, you, you, you just have a sense that, that either the bigger cities are gonna take it, our LMI hurts us every time on these projects. Then, we've already done mitigation projects on our LMI areas, and they know when we're trying to reach to get back into those LMI areas, it's, it's not gonna work.
I think the only, the only thing that's maybe benefited us on the, uh, the competition, the mitigation grant that would be the floodgate project is that, that project could potentially serve other areas outside the city and ETJ, and they'll, they'll look at that as well. And it, it ups the, uh, it ups the LMI, our LMI qualification a little bit.
So I'm assuming we got zero on the scoring, so, zero to the twenty?
Did we get the LMI qual-
Zero twenty or zero, right, we got zero.
Based on the score, I think it was zero.
Yeah.
But, and then other than that, of course, our street, we're ready to kick off streets, we're ready to go. We're trying to get it done by December. Um, uh, at that time, we'll bring back the council with funds we have, we are anticipating some funds. We can't say how much, we don't know yet, it's, be irresponsible to try to do so, approach council and, um, talk about the use of those additional funds. Um, water plant, they, they are drilling a test well, y'all probably seen the report a couple of times about the additional well. Uh, I, I don't mean to keep bringing it up and scaring everybody, but it is what it is. Uh, once we have the test well and we know what the yield will be, um, we'll have a better understanding of what we're looking at. Uh, in this area, we generally get about four hundred fifty to five hundred gallons a minute, it's very best we get. Um, so if we get that, we'll be, we'll be doing okay for a few years. If, if we get less than that, we'll be looking at doing a new well probably by twenty twenty-four. Um, but, like I said, things are looking up on the waterfront, it's, it's looking good. Um, and then drainage, we'll just get started as quick as we can, and maybe to talk to Strand and get going. I don't know, I don't think I have anything else for that.
Thank you, Cliff.
I had a quick question, did you, did you have a total yet on the phase one bond, street repair?
On the phase one?
Yeah, phase one, what it kinda came out to?
I'll include that, it, it, we're good, we're good, we got, I think we cut our last check, uh, just the other day. Uh, let me make a note for you, I'll include that in the report.
Okay.
That, that word we said on the phase one.
Awesome, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right, any other questions for Cliff, capital improvement? All right, moving along, city manager report?
Uh, included it, uh, with your packet, it's basically, uh, I'd like to reiterate the, uh, two finance awards in the past month, month and a half, I guess, the distinguished budget presentation for FY twenty and our transparency stars from the comptroller's office, very proud of that, uh, staff did a great job on that. Uh, I, I heard something interesting, I, I got a DM message, uh, the other day on this distinguished budget presentation award on, actually on LinkedIn, and it said, well, yeah, that's, that's awesome, y'all did, you did some pretty pictures and, uh, and, you know, put, put together a good budget. I would, uh, challenge all of you to go look at what the GFOA guidelines are for this award, and, uh, it, it's more than doing bars, charts and graphs, it's, uh, it's pretty in-depth. As, as well as the transparency stars, uh, uh, these are not giving me awards by any means, but, uh, so I really wanna shut LinkedIn off at this point.
You didn't tell me about that, or?
Yeah, well, and, and it came from somebody in a neighboring city that didn't also have this award, either one, so. I thought that was quite funny. Uh, anyways, uh, also, be, beginning stages of the ARP rescue plan, uh, we're, we're up and running on that now, thank you. Working in the budgeting process, um, we're having a budget workshop with council to review budget items and look at supplemental requests, that's something new we're doing this year, uh, with these items. Uh, we're doing good though, we're in a good spot where we are. And, uh, lastly, as we're all aware, it's hurricane season, I mean, they're already lining up out in the Gulf, they're whirling and twirling and, you know, it looks like a repeat of last year. Uh, please, everybody make a plan, have a plan, um, get some spare food and water if you're gonna stick around and, and know how to communicate with people and, uh, know, know what your contact resources are. Uh, you know, we say it every year, and yet, every year we get to that point and we don't have what we need, so. Uh, now's a great time, you know, when they're out there on the horizon to make that trip to HEB before they're out of stuff, or Kroger, or-
You can buy plywood for your windows, you might as well build a new house, right?
Yeah, but it's on a, it's on a capital improvement program now that lumber is. Uh, but that's all I've got, thank you, council.
Thank you, sir. All right, moving on, council member comments or report, position one?
Yeah, I got a couple of things, uh, attended the crime control meeting the other night, and it was good. They had a quorum and they passed their proposed twenty-one, twenty-two budget. Uh, secondly, uh, we had some concerns a while back about safety, and, uh, I don't know where I work, we have a, uh, we have a, a stop-work program, anybody can stop work, right? Anybody sees a safety concern, and there was a safety concern a while back, and it didn't seem like it was a very positive thing. But I like to read this article from May twenty-first. Four Arizona, Arizonian kids injured in second incident this week of bounce, bounce house being lifted by wind. Four Arizona, Arizona kids have been injured in the second weekend incident this, this week of bounce houses being lifted by the wind. The most recent occurred on Thursday afternoon, the bounce house was used in a birthday party at a neighborhood park in Mesa, Arizona. Several kids were playing inside with strong winds sent it flying into the air around four o'clock. The wind sent the bounce houses flying several feet. Uh, children ages, ranging in ages five to four suffered moderate to severe injuries as a result. The children went to nearby hospital, uh, but their specific injuries were unclear. The article goes on to say some other things in here. Uh, in twenty-twelve, study in PDRAC found that over sixty-four thousand reports of emergency room visits related to bounce house structures between nineteen ninety and twenty-ten. The study discovered that a number of the bounce structure-related injuries had increased fifteen times from nineteen ninety-five to twenty-ten, and that's just because more people are using them. So, you know, if there's a concern, yeah, we need to make sure that they're installed right, make sure they're installed correctly, and that's a, a leading indicator, right? And lagging indicators, we need to make sure that we have insurance on that stuff. So, just a little FYI. I thought it was very interesting after all the commotion about it recently. I would like to, uh, say congratulations about the distinguished budget pres- uh, presentation, transparent star. I think that's great compared to where we were a year and a half ago. And also, I'd like to thank Keep Richwood Beautiful and Community Garden, doing a lot of work out there, got the trash bins out there, got them all full, got your little grow, grow gardens going, it looks real good, appreciate it.
Thank you.
That's all I have, thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Position two, any council member comment?
Uh, yes, I, I think that all of council received an email, um, from Miss Biggs asking about broadband access. Um, I had a question if we could put together a survey, um, maybe a Facebook survey, um, asking if anyone in this, in the city has problems with broadband access. Um, I know some people do, but then I saw a Facebook post not too long ago where other people in Richwood were all having problems with it. Um, I guess ATT stopped offering the outdated DSO and, um, some areas don't have access to Comcast either. Um, is there any way to do a survey or something like that to see?
Definitely, we can get it done.
That would be great, and if we can look into it, because I wonder if it's something like they just need flat plans or electrical plans or something like that, something that would be easy, not financially burdening on the city, but just easy to help out residents if that's something that could be done, just for us to maybe take into it.
Sure.
And thank you all so much.
All right, thank you. Uh, position four?
Yeah, um, I wanted to follow up on, uh, an email about where we're, how the, the outcome of the level two, um, assessment. I know we tested positive for chlor- coliform April nineteenth, April twentieth, and then May twenty-sixth and May twenty-seventh in certain parts of our water system and where we're at with that and.
I know we tested positive for coliform April nineteenth, April twentieth and then May 26th and May 27th in certain parts of our water system and where we're at with that and
We can't hold discussion right now.
Huh?
We can't hold discussion.
Yeah, just
It's just common.
Okay, just my comments, just if we can have a follow up or how that assessment went and what it, what it's looking like for the city, any impact or
Would it be sufficient if I address it in the weekly report?
All right, position five?
Uh, yeah, so I would like to also recognize KRB for the work that they've been doing for our city. They have definitely been improving our city and the hours that they spend providing to the food pantry, providing to our residents, especially Ms. Mayor. She does a great job and also whoever took her grow bins, return them if you're watching this, we'll find you. And so I, I hope to attend the KRB meeting as the liaison, thank you for the last we got canceled because of the forum. So we'll reschedule that, so no updates on that. Other than that, I'd like to thank our first responders, emergency personnel, firemen and police officers and EMS. So thank y'all for that. And then also I'd like to thank the mayor for sending out the weather updates, he's always right on top of that, sending that out and I, I find that very beneficial. So I'd like to recognize him for that. And also thank y'all to staff, I mean, I think we are trucking in the right direction as a city and I really appreciate the effort that y'all put in.
All right, thank you, sir. Move on to mayor's report or council member comments, really. To reiterate what Eric said, preparation for hurricane season comes year after year after year. And we all wait till the, the week of and everybody goes in panic mode and whether it's the HEB runs, Krogers going to Home Depot looking for something. You know, I myself have been a part of that, so if we could all break the human nature of procrastination. We, we can do a lot ourselves to prepare our homes, our families and be more prepared for when that storm comes. It's not if, it's when they will come. Thanks to the police department, a lot of increases in activity, patrolling, seeing them, the new Tahoe's, they look great. So special thanks to our police department. And I won't hold us up any further, so thanks to everyone again on Facebook, if you're still, if you made it, 8:30. We appreciate everyone logging in and we hope to see everyone at the next one.
Thanks, sir.
All right, thank you, now everybody's favorite time.
Future agenda items, do we have any?
Oh, sorry.
Just in case.
Future agenda. Trying to get out.
Can we have future agenda items on the future agenda?
You want to have future, I'm sure they will be there.
Okay.
I'll have more on the request for this, the signed ordinance for Creek Bend, I was still working on it, I didn't get it done for this month.
And everybody needs to sign the plaque, correct?
Please.
Everybody go sign the plaque.
Well, we have till December.
Till Melissa does it and then I'm gonna be coming through.
All right, anything further? Okay.
I won't hold us up.
We have 2031 and we are adjourned, thank you.
I start ticking if we don't follow the rules.